Ohio Regular City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. Please join me in a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. You will hear three taps of the gavel when it is time to stand. Please join me in a moment of meditation now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of Council, Mrs. Amy Skank, please call the attendance roll.
Mr. Lally.
President.
Mrs. Carter.
President.
Mr. West.
Here.
Mr. Horn.
Here.
Mayor Slamka.
Here. Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is a presentation. We have a proclamation honoring Dr. Anidra Million. I would like to call Dr. Anidra Million to the podium, please.
You can join her, yes, please. You guys can join her at the podium.
Pride and admiration to present this city proclamation and dedicate a day in honor of Dr. Anidra Million, a lifelong Middletown resident, distinguished educator, and community advocate, who has recently achieved historic recognition on both state and national levels. Whereas in 2024, Dr. Million made history by being crowned Mrs. Ohio America, representing the cities of Cincinnati and Middletown, she went on to represent the entire state of Ohio at the Mrs. America National Pageant, where she proudly placed as first runner-up, the highest placement for a Mrs. Ohio title holder in over 25 years. Remarkably, Dr. Million is also the first ever Mrs. Ohio America to be crowned over the age of 50, breaking barriers and inspiring women of all generations. And whereas, as a Middletown High School graduate and an esteemed educator in Middletown City Schools for nearly three decades, Dr. Million has continuously served her community with dedication and excellence. She is the first Middletown native to ever win the title of Mrs. Ohio America, an incredible achievement that brings great pride to our city. And whereas beyond her titles, Dr. Million's Year of Service as Mrs. Ohio America has been marked by tireless advocacy work on a state and national scale. She partnered with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration as a drug and alcohol prevention advocate. Dr. Million represented the Ohio School-Based Center of Excellence, speaking on Capitol Hill and at the Ohio State House about critical issues including mental health, resources, education, and student advocacy. She amplified vital causes in Middletown and across Ohio, creating greater awareness and access to prevention and wellness resources in underserved communities. Dr. Anidra Million has demonstrated extraordinary commitment to public service, education, and youth empowerment. Her legacy of service will stand as a hallmark for others to emulate. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Slamka, on behalf of the Middletown City Council and all of the city's residents, do hereby honor and celebrate Dr. Anidra Million for her individual achievements and also uplift the spirit of service, perseverance, and representation she has brought to Middletown and to the state of Ohio and to hereby proclaim July 1st, 2025, as Dr. Anidra Million Day.
I would just like to say thank you so very much to my community for honoring me, for seeing me, for celebrating me. I am a proud Middletown resident, and so this honor means everything to me. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next, there's a slight change in the agenda this evening. We will move the citizen comments and council comments up to before the public hearings. The next item therefore is the citizen comments. Professional presentation, free of foul language is expected. This is not a time for debate, questions and answer, or any back and forth conversation. This is a time for you, our residents, to be able to present in front of council on record, uninterrupted, and have the floor. We have received eight comment cards this evening. I will prompt each speaker for their next steps when they reach the podium. I would like to first call Marva Gaston to the podium. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residents for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Hold on just a second as we bring up the clock. Perfect. All right. Thank you so much. You may begin.
My name is Marva Gaston. I reside in 913 Sixth Avenue here in Middletown. Though I am happy to have finally received an invitation to meet with the city on tomorrow in reference to the debris left over from demolition of the Middletown Paperboard Factory, there are a few things I feel still need to be addressed by council, not just about the debris, but about some other things I've noticed throughout the community. I've already addressed safety concerns about the debris. On 28 June 25, I left for a weekend trip. It was about 8:00 a.m. in the morning as I passed the gate and both gates were wide open. I didn't see a bulldozer nor did I see anyone around, but I assume some sort of activity conducted by the city was being done. I went on my trip and returned Sunday evening to find the gates were still wide open. They were not secured until Monday evening. I find that to be more than disturbing knowing how often Middletown police officers ride around that area and never notice the gates were open. No matter how long it takes to resolve this issue, safety has to come first. Something like this should never happen. I've been walking the neighborhood and have noticed other things that I feel need to be addressed. One morning I noticed broken glass along one of the entrances to Old South Park at Fifth Avenue. There was a city maintenance crew sitting under the overhang in the park, so I addressed them and asked if they would clean up the glass. They politely agreed, and I went on my way. As I walked down a different sidewalk within the park, along the tennis courts, I noticed some sort of water leak, and there was a huge puddle of water around it. I turned and let them know about that as well. The crew, again, agreed to address it, but they got in their car, in the truck, never picked up the glass, and went on their way. The next day, the glass was gone, but the water was still running. As I approached meeting tonight, that water is still running in the park. Who pays for all that wasted water and why would it take that long for it to be addressed? I was also at a meeting where it had been approved to repave Brill Boulevard. Brill Boulevard is smooth sailing compared to Main Street between 9th and 14th Avenue. It's like a roller coaster. How do you justify repaving a road that isn't that bad when you have a main thoroughfare that runs through the whole south end of town? How is that in turmoil? How are these jobs being chosen? What criteria is being used to prioritize importance of urgency? That's pretty much all I have, but you know, it doesn't make any sense. I just don't understand how things like this can get missed and go on for so long, so hopefully these are some things that the city will address pretty rapidly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaston. Next on the, I'd like to call Mr. Jeff Payne to the podium. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence or work address for the record, and you will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please begin.
Thank you. Jeff Payne, 1050 Central Avenue, Downtown Middletown, Inc. I'm recommending and requesting that the city of Middletown delay its decision on the demolition of the Manchester Snyder Building, First National Bank Building, and the Vale House until after the completion of the downtown refresh process. Completion of the refresh process is defined as completion of the RFQ and allowing for developers to make their submissions for review. The reason for that is over 30 citizens have been meeting with the Department of Community and Economic Development Team to develop a strategy that creates opportunities for varying scales of development that can encourage existing property owners as well as outside developers to look at our downtown as a whole as an opportunity zone, and that's the term that I'm kind of using to define it. In essence, we would be creating a market for investment in our downtown. Making a decision on demolition using the August 2025 deadline, I believe, is premature and would negatively impact the refresh product. I'm also recommending that the vacant property legislation, however it is tweaked or completed, that it be implemented simultaneously with the release of the refresh product. Also, I wanted to point out that we, working with, DMI working with the city in Heritage, Ohio, conducted an assessment using Professor Mertz, who is an architect specializing in historic preservation from Belmont College. On May 1st and 2nd, we held the preservation workshop, and the report, which was just recently submitted, stated the following. There were four buildings that were looked at, two privately owned, and the other two being the First National Building and the Vale Property. The First National Building, the report simply stated, simply stated, "The building needs to be made watertight, dried out, and cleaned up. Rooftop trees do not belong on the roof unless they are in pots and are being watered regularly by the staff." On the Vale Property, it referenced the reception building on the rear, and it stated ironically, but maybe not surprisingly, newer construction on the site has suffered catastrophic failure due to its neglect, while the historic older portion of the building remains quite solid. In closing, we need to take a breath and look on developing a common sense approach to revitalization. I believe that Lisha and her team are on the right track, and prior to that, I was a little skeptical, and you need to allow them the opportunity to put forth a plan of action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Next, I would like to call Mr. Abdul Shakur Ahmad. You may stand or sit according to your preference, and please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown address for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Peace to council. Abdul Shakur Ahmad. I guess my address will be 846 9th Avenue is where I grew up, and I live in Dayton, Ohio currently, 220 Park Manor Drive. So I'm here today to share a little history. I've addressed the board previously and also sent a flyer about an exhibit that exists in the Pendleton Arts Center on the, I'll call it the Underground Railroad Middletown History Exhibit. And in this exhibit, we go back before the Native Americans came, and showing that the transition of humans from Africa came here 1.1 million years ago. But the current topic that we're dealing with is downtown Middletown was the center for a safe house. That, who was it? Dr. Campbell and his wife, whose son became governor of Ohio, James Campbell, had a safe house. And Governor's Square and the Pendleton Arts Center is the location of that. There are also two other houses in the area, Francis Titus, out on Route 4, right next to the Shell Filling Station, and Park, City Park, is right there in that yard, as well as Gardiner Manor, where Stephen Binnell had a house on the Underground Railroad. Significant coming up the 200th anniversary of the groundbreaking of the Miami Erie Canal Underground Railroad Route, the Great Miami River Underground Railroad Route. But the unity of the people was the thing that Middletown can hang its hat on. People came together for the good of all of mankind. So as we look at this history, you're invited to go underground at the Pendleton Arts Center on the actual land where the safe house was, Pendleton Arts Center. So we've been doing this research for a little while. My friends say you've been doing this a long time. So we have videos, we have newspaper articles, we have interviews, it's there. We're connected with the African-American Museum in Cincinnati, Freedom Center. They've come and helped us out in September with International Underground Railroad Month. Ohio was the 12th state to start observing this event three years ago, and we were a part of that observation. So as we grow here in Middletown, and we hear all of the great things that are happening in Middletown, my request is to counsel, share this with your constituents, invite them to go underground at the Pendleton Arts Center and enjoy themselves. It's a fun thing. If I say so myself, it's very, very, very enlightening, and having fun with it each and every day. So my call is during the summer months, when it's hot outside like it was last week, on between, what is it, Mondays, no, Tuesdays and Saturdays, the Pendleton Arts Center air-conditioned is open from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. each day. So tomorrow, I mean, not tomorrow, but Friday, Fourth of July Parade, it'll be right there on the land of the Underground Railroad, and the exhibit will be open to be seen. So we're just praying that we unite and be proud of all Middletown history. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Joe Whitman to the podium, please. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence work address or interest in the city for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
I'm Joe Whitman. I'm with the Art Central Foundation, 4 North Main Street, right beside the First National Bank Building. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, but I'm very disappointed that I have to. Our downtown's future is once again a topic of city council. This topic has been an on-again, off-again for many city council meetings over the last 20 years. Many of us here tonight have been actively working in and working on our downtown for 20 years. 20 years. It's frustrating and maddening to hear the majority of council speak about the necessary and inevitable destruction of our city's historic buildings, particularly the National Bank and the Manchester Hotel. When the city took possession of each of these buildings, they were functional with businesses and organizations that had active leases. Through a series of mismanaged agreements and outright neglect, these once proud and beautiful buildings have become broken and battered. When the city owns property, it is bound to follow its own codes and ordinances. City Middletown has failed to even come close to performing their due diligence in maintaining these buildings. There is no excuse. The city owns them and allowed them to fall into disrepair. I recently attended a meeting with city staff and Madam Mayor about the so-called refresh for downtown. I'm encouraged there was a meeting, but I'm shocked that we needed to have one. Middletown has put in place codes and ordinances for historic preservation, Chapter 1212, incorporated the International Property Maintenance Code in Chapter 1436. We have a registry of abandoned buildings in proper maintenance in Chapter 1458. We've paid specialists and experts for developing master plans, development plans, housing studies, youth studies, special zones, traffic patterns, historic districts, and more. The only thing that has been missing is a city with the drive, focus, and The only thing that has been missing is a city with the drive, focus, and vision to consistently follow through. I've heard the term "the issue has kicked down the road" or "that downtown fell off our radar" too many times. In truth, the issue has been willful neglect, shirked responsibility, and the inconsistency in governance that Middletown is known for. Middletown is a city that moves from crisis to crisis. We find ourselves back in crisis mode with a council that is poised to destroy our historic buildings. These are buildings the people of Middletown have devoted their time and talents, attention, sweat, and money to save. It only takes three people on council to destroy our heritage. The issue could be decided by two unelected members and only one member that was elected by the people of Middletown. This is unacceptable. It's time to admit our experiment with our five-person council has failed. City council is a thankless job, I know. It is time to share the burden and increase the size of our councils. State of Ohio demands seven council members per Ohio Revised Code 705.72 for an at-large council for a city of our size. If we go back to a ward system, that number rises to nine. In my opinion, more voices at the table always yield better decisions. I feel I have to point out to some on council that why you are seeing more people at council meeting, it's not from a sudden enthronement with council meetings. You are seeing citizens show up that are passionate and fed up with a city that takes no responsibility for the lack of progress that has been long promised. Will it be easy? No. Is it possible? Yes. But it will take work, lots of work, work that many of us for over the last 20 years have been doing. Feel free to contact any of us, and feel free to join us in revitalizing our downtown. But if you want to tear down our historic buildings, there's going to be a fight, and we will win. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman. Next, I would like to call to the podium Ms. Mika Glazer Jones. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Hello again, city council, Mayor Slankka and City Manager Combs. My name is Mika Glazer Jones of 2 South Maine, former Oglesby Barnet's Bank, now the Windermere. Tonight, I want to speak about why I believe Middletown must stabilize-
Start the clock. Sorry about that. I just wanted to start the clock. Please forgive me.
Tonight, I want to speak about why I believe that Middletown must stabilize and reinvest in our historic buildings like the Manchester Inn, First Financial Bank, and the Snyder/Sunshine Building. We are at a critical crossroads facing downtown Middletown. We are losing ground, and we're in danger of losing more buildings. But we don't have to lose our future. Demolition may seem like the simplest answer to vacant or aged structures, but I'm here to make the case that stabilizing and reinvesting in our historic buildings is the smarter, more sustainable, more community-driven path forward. There is an economic value in preserving historical buildings. Rehabilitation work like that needed at the Manchester, First Financial, and Sunshine Building creates significantly more local jobs per dollar than new construction. These buildings are eligible for historic tax credits, facade improvement grants, and revitalization funding, resources that multiply our local dollars. Dave Williams, Board Chair of Heritage Ohio, said that historic buildings are one of Ohio's natural resources, and that historic tax credits are a vital economic tool. The state has awarded $733 million in tax credits, which supported $6 billion in completed projects. That is an eight-to-one return on investment. Did you know that Ohio has more listings on the National Register of Historic Places than all but two states, California and Massachusetts? There are 4,200 in Ohio and 480 in Butler, Warren, and surrounding counties. Look at what's already happening in surrounding communities. Reinvestment in just one building can often spark a ripple effect on neighboring properties. The Manchester Inn is not just a building, it's a cornerstone of Middletown's story, once the heartbeat of our downtown economy and social life. The Snyder and the First Financial Banks aren't eyesores, they are opportunities. With the right vision, they can become housing, food halls, small business incubators, retail, or restaurants. The character they bring can't be created with new builds. Demolition takes away what makes Middletown Middletown. It erases layers of meaning, craftsmanship, and memory. Preserving and reusing buildings like First Financial Bank is an environmental win. The greenest building is the one that is already built. Demolishing these structures sends hundreds of tons of debris to our landfills and erases years of embedded energy and materials. Not to mention, these buildings were built really well with steel beams right here from Armco, and they will not come down without a fight. We're not asking for a full restoration tomorrow. Stabilizing these buildings by securing roofs, stopping water damage, buys us time to create viable plans and funding strategies. We can approach this incrementally, one block, one building, one floor, one use at a time. Other visionaries have turned hotels into housing, storefronts into galleries, department stores into restaurants, and hotels and banks into venues. If we lose these buildings, we lose a piece of ourselves and prime redevelopment sites with irreplaceable architecture and history. We cannot replace our architectural legacy with gravel lots and expect economic growth. That's not development, that's delay. Let's invest in stabilizing these structures, not because they're old, but because they still have value to offer. Let's create a future Middletown that is rooted in its history, not haunted by demolitions. Preservation is not sentimentality, it's strategy. Let's choose the path that honors our past while building a better tomorrow. I respectfully ask city council to slow down the decision-making process to allow adequate time for more complete information to be gathered and to ensure a wide range of qualified developers have the opportunity to review and respond to the new RFQ. Middletown deserves the best possible outcome, and that begins with an inclusive, deliberate process. And just an FYI, Heritage Ohio is hosting a workshop on July 23rd in Greenville, Ohio, all about financial tools and incentives for downtown revitalization, and I strongly suggest everyone attend. It's very helpful information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glazer Jones. Next, I would like to invite John Hada to the podium, please. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence or work address for the city record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Dr. John Hada, 16 Alameda Circle, Middletown. Imagine with me, for a moment, it's next January. It's a wintry day. All the leaves are brown and the sky is gray. Thought that'd get a better chuckle. In short, you're depressed. Your favorite team's just lost and won't make the playoffs. Making matters worse, you learn that a series you watch on Netflix won't be renewed for another season. What's really got you down, though, is that the demolition of the Manchester Inn, the Sunshine Building, and maybe even the First Financial Bank Building approved by city council the previous summer is leaving impossible to fill craters where your downtown used to be. And you're realizing there's no restoring a downtown once the last of its key landmarks are gone. A month ago, I would have subscribed to the bleak scenario I'm imagining here. I wasn't seeing a lot of hope that these buildings could be repurposed. Today, I'm more hopeful. We're seeing signs that a course reversal could be in the offing. We have the Save Downtown Middletown Group, led by Gabe Shane Line, meeting with council members, developers, and others to chart a way forward. Prospective developers, investors, and area officials are touring the key properties. A new RFQ is in the works. Downtown refresh meetings are ongoing. Gradually, it's dawning on many that there's a lot to do and a lot at stake with what happens downtown. So what is at stake? I'd suggest that there's even more at stake than we're acknowledging so far. By that, I mean that we can't limit our thinking to just what happens with these three or four buildings. We need to consider that what happens with them will shape how we address larger questions regarding downtown life down the road. Wouldn't future developers be even less inclined to sign up for helping rebuild downtown with these key properties demolished? Wouldn't many Middletown citizens be more inclined to wash their hands of the downtown if efforts to save buildings come to nothing? Hopes have been raised, dashing them at this point won't help. My main point for tonight is that if we stick with the next month's August deadline and our council votes to bring down buildings, it's not likely that we'll ever get to this point again. Not to be too negative here, but we'll be in a worse shape as a downtown community than we've been up until now. Council deserves credit for bringing forward the issue of what to do with these buildings, and forcefully at that. Forceful enough that the matter has aroused much citizen interest, maybe more than council would have wanted or anticipated, but there we are. Can we consider substituting this August all-or-nothing vote on demolition with a different approach, replacing the solitary focus on the up-or-down decision with a commitment to interrelated goals, each with its own timeframe for enactment and its own targets for completion? How council and citizens define these goals will take some time to sort out, but once we've worked them out, if we can do it together, we should be in a pretty good place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hada. Next, I would like to call Ms. Jade Smarta to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference, and please adjust the microphone and speak into it at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence for the record, and then you will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Thank you. Jade Smarta, 121 South Maine. I have a couple points to address this evening regarding the economic revitalization of downtown Middletown. I want to say that the working group sessions with city staff have been productive. We've come up with great ideas to revise the 2022 RFQ in a way that could pique the interest from more developers than ever. Our last session was on June 26th. Citizens would like to have more of these working group sessions with staff to further implement our ideas. For example, on June 26th, we discussed, including in the RFQ, standalone breakout pages that showcase Middletown's existing attractions, like the Soroc Opera House, the Historic District, Smith Park, the forthcoming New Park across from the Sunshine Building, and more. We discussed adding photos. We're working on getting more, including aerial photos. We've discussed adding metrics, like the number of visitors drawn each year to the Opera House, to Smith Park, including for soccer tournaments, light up Middletown, et cetera. That way, prospective developers can draw inspiration from the existing success stories in town and see the potential. In other words, they can see that here in Middletown, they're not working with nothing. So my first ask, like many others have already asked for today, please delay voting on releasing a new RFQ until we've had more time to work with city staff to create the best RFQ possible. And the draft keeps getting better with each working group session, so we'd like to have at least one or two more of those. My second ask, like others have already put forth, please delay voting on demolition until after this RFQ process and any related processes play out. Voting to demolish even one building while the RFQ is pending could have a chilling effect on potential developers who do not want to be coming up with plans based on a moving target. We also don't want to risk demolishing potentially the one building that a developer was really interested in, so let's slow down. Please don't make any irreversible decisions during this critical time. We ask that you do whatever is necessary to secure the buildings for now, and delay any votes on demolition while this RFQ and perhaps later RFP or other processes play out. Finally, I just want to talk briefly about the vision. Last city council meeting, I commented that these brick buildings with awnings and wrought iron and beautiful facades are commodities in limited supply. They can't be recreated. Lots of people, my generation and younger, they want them, and not many towns have them. And it's also true that some in my generation and other generations, they want new shining things. So let's offer something for everyone here in Middletown. We can do that. Middletown can and should have the East End and Renaissance point for those who want the new and shiny. But downtown can and should be for the ones craving that historic brick that they can't get anywhere else, the ones craving that less suburban vibe. I could give plenty of examples of why there is a strong market for both, but I would run out of time, so I will leave that comment there for now. But again, just two asks at this point. Please let citizens have at least one or two more working group sessions with city staff to create the best RFQ possible. And two, please don't vote on demolition until well after the RFQ and related processes play out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smarta. I'd now like to invite our last citizen comment for the evening, Mr. Gabe Shane Line, to the podium. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Slankka and city council. I'm here once again on behalf of the Save Downtown Middletown Coalition and the South Maine and Highlands Historic Associations to speak about the downtown revitalization effort and the future of some of our signature downtown historic buildings that are city-owned. I want to start off by thanking all of you for your contributions in this effort over the last few months. This council deserves credit for putting this issue front and center, planning for action and timelines, and providing the motivation for civilians, the city, and stakeholders to begin collaborating at a level that could finally move the downtown revitalization project past the finish line. I am excited. I'm extremely encouraged by the progress I've seen so far. This council has initiated building walkthroughs, this is the list of progress I'm going to go through. The city has initiated building walkthroughs to confirm structural integrity of these buildings. We're looking forward to hopefully hearing great news on all fronts there. We have been told that this council has ordered a thorough cost analysis to determine if demolition, with or without plans for new development, is indeed a wiser, long-term financial decision than funding the maintenance of these buildings for potential future use. Given the importance of this issue to the future of Middletown, we expect that this analysis will be comprehensive and look forward far enough into the future. We hope to learn more about that study and its methods from this council and city in the future, near future. This council has advised citizens and city staff to work together to develop a new RFQ, which we hope to wrap up in the next few days, pass on to council for approval, and put out for bid in the coming weeks. Most of this council has very generously agreed to meet with me to discuss your positions, preferences, expectations, and decisional criteria for a potential vote on demolition. I have been well-advised, and it has been extremely helpful in this effort. Councilman Lawley, I look forward to talking with you tomorrow, I think. I haven't responded to your email yet, but I will. And Councilwoman Carter, I hope you'll afford me the opportunity to speak or to hear your thoughts in detail and allow me to share mine, and those are the 100-plus Middletonians that I represent with you. City staff and citizens like myself have worked hard and with great enthusiasm to develop an RFQ that I think will be much more likely to interest developers. We've also started mobilizing to engage as many developers as possible and representing downtown in a positive light it deserves. After all, while downtown may currently be a bit of a desert, it exists within a jungle of great opportunity and adjacent community assets like Smith Park, Riverside, the beautiful Central Avenue corridor with so much potential, the beautiful South Maine and Highlands neighborhoods and their world-class historic homes, Forest Hills Golf Course, the new park that's coming up on North Maine, and Miami University Middletown, to name several. These assets have not been promoted enough in the past, so we intend to do much better this time around. I want to say that I do believe I have a unique perspective as a liaison between city council, city staff, and citizens of the Save Downtown Middletown Coalition. I am telling you now, this council and everyone in this room, like I told coalition members in our meeting last night, what I am seeing is special. I'm seeing a true partnership in which city council, city staff, and citizens appear to be striving towards the same goal, which is to save these buildings if we possibly can, and finally, truly revitalizing our downtown. This is a massive, massive opportunity for everyone involved. I'm fully committed, and I hope you all are too. Let's see here, in the coming weeks, as we engage developers, try to whet their appetite for this great opportunity, it will be absolutely critical for each member of this- for this great opportunity, it will be absolutely critical for each member of this team to participate. We will need all parties in the same room, hopefully regularly, to encourage one another and keep optimism and confidence in one another high. Council members will want to see multiple developers in high interest before investing public funds. Developers will be highly interested by citizens, city staff, and city council members who see, who they see are competent, fully bought in, heavily involved in the process, and bringing a great case for success to the table. Highly interested developers should convince city council members that any investment in public funds would be worth it in the long run.
Thank you, Mr. Schoenlein. That is time. Thank you.
Let's get it done, guys.
Thank you. And that concludes our public participation for the evening. The next agenda item is council comments. We will begin to my left with Councilmember Lally, followed by Councilmember Carter, and then to my right with Councilmember West, followed by Councilmember Horn. I will speak last. Mr. Lally?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. First of all, congratulations to Dr. Nidjer Million. It's awesome to have such great people in Middletown doing incredibly wonderful things, you know, and it's, it's just a long list of citizens from Middletown who are not only affecting things here in Middletown, but in the state of Ohio and the United States and the world. So thank you very much, and congratulations. The second thing, I want to reach out and say thank you to the parade committee that's putting on the parade this Friday, the July 4th Parade. The, the volunteers for this, the parade committee, they've done the Memorial Day Parade and the July 4th Parade. They have done a fantastic job getting these parades going, and I want to say thank you to them. Also want to reassure them that, because there seems to be some negativity on social media, because we are having Lenny Robertson and his group videotape and tape the, the parade, and I guess some people are seeing that as we're trying to take over the parade. And I want to assure the parade committee that we are not. We are simply, when Lenny came to us with the idea of regenerating TV Middletown and going with the ICRC group to do events in, in Middletown and videotape sporting events, other civic events, we said, well, what, the next big thing coming up is, is the July 4th Parade, why don't you videotape it and show us what, what it, what it's going to look like? And that's all that it simply was. It was not an attempt by council or the city to take over the parade. Mark White and his team of volunteers who put on the, the parades in Middletown do a fantastic job, and we thank you very much for that. So everybody come out and see the parade Friday. I'm sure it'll be, it'll be a good one. And the cool thing about the July 4th Parade is a couple years ago, we decided to, let's take it down Central Avenue where it is, you, the historic part of Middletown, and it just gives you the feeling of, of back in the days when downtown was thriving and how we're going to once again get there. So thank you to the parade committee. The last thing I want to say is, if, if the citizens want that August date to be pushed back, then I, I am fine with that, if that's what the citizens want. I am okay. I was the one who said, look, we need to set, we need to set an August, an August deadline and make a decision. And my intentions was to light a fire in the proverbial behind of Middletown, and I think that's exactly what happened. So I thank this group for coming together. If that's, if my colleagues want to, you know, give this citizens committee and staff more time, I'm okay with that. And I, but I guess that would, you know, see how the rest of council feels about that. But, but once again, you know, I, I don't want to see it pushed, you know, into months and years down the road, because that's what we've dealt with for the last 20 years. And you know, a lot of, a lot of people want to sling a lot of blame around about what happened. Look, a lot of these buildings were just thrown on the city of Middletown. And then other bad things happened. We laid off 15 firefighters. We lay, we lost 15-plus police officers to attrition. We had no money to upkeep these buildings, and I'm, I'm not trying to, to make excuses, but our priorities became, how do we, how do we protect our citizens? And public health and safety became the primary concern, and that's a large reason why some of these buildings went into disrepair. And this council is left to pick up the pieces, and the citizens are, are left up to pick up the pieces. I was involved in that. I became fire chief in 2014, 2015, and we had to rebuild public safety. We had to rebuild the fire department. We had to rebuild the police department. We had to rebuild the police department's command staff. We had to get our numbers back up, you know, from a low in the fire division from 64 back up to where we're at today of, I believe, Brian, what, 84, 85 in the police divisions at 87, somewhere around there. And, and we still have ways to go there, to be honest with you, because for, you know, when I hired in the Division of Fire in 1989, there was 90, probably 94 police officers and 92 firefighters. So that's a large part of what happened. 2008 hit where we were decimated by the economy. When John Kasich and at the State House took the municipal service charges from municipalities in Middletown, and suddenly we were looking at a $2 million deficit, plus a downturn in the economy, that's a large part of, of what happened. You know, we, we scrambled in the fire department to figure out how we were going to, how we were going to make runs, make calls for services. So a lot of things happened. I think we're in a better place today. Matter of fact, I'm positive we're in a better place today. But getting back to the point, if this committee, if the citizens want more time, I'm okay with that, and I, I will let my colleagues here expand on that. So, and I, I, what I hear is very promising, and, you know, and let's just continue down that path. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lally. Mrs. Carter?
Good evening, Middletown. I listened to your requests for us regarding the Manchester Hotel, and I decided I don't want to speak about that until we have a solution. And the solution will come from us meeting before August. I mean, August is way off. We need to make a decision today. We need to make decisions right now, in the month of July, what are we going to do? We also need to consider our citizens, our citizens here in Middletown. We have landlords moving into Middletown, opening up buildings, and renting those buildings to our disabled for $1,200 a month. And all they have in that room that they rent is a hot plate, even though they advertise stoves and bedrooms. That's what we should focus on. We are so caught up in things that we ignore our citizens, the people who make the city, and they're suffering. A young man, 19-years-old, came out of, I guess you call it aging out of the system, so they tried to find him an apartment, and they found this apartment over on Crawford. And it said in, on the website, luxury apartment. And he went into this apartment, and he was sleeping on an air mattress. There was also a hot plate for him to cook on, 19-years-old, and he had to pay $1,200 a month for this apartment, which left him with nothing. He didn't have anything left. And, and people are coming into our city because they consider us as Middletown trap. I heard a person describe us as Middletown trap. They came in bringing services for the mentally ill. They said, this is the great place to go, because you got a lot of mentally ill here. I thought to myself, I won't refer to you, because you're coming into our city and you're taking advantage. And people are taking advantage, because they think we're a Middletown trap. We need to think about our people. We need to think about our city. There is so much here that we can offer, but we need our citizens to offer it, and we need people to back our citizens. We need to do something for our people, or we're not going to have a city. We're just going to have an industry, a building over here, a building over there, and our people are suffering. So we need to take a great look at how we are thinking about Middletown, because other people are thinking we're just a Middletown trap. That bothered me greatly, that they would come here and think of us as Middletown trap. Mayor?
Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Mr. West?
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations again, Dr. Million. That's a, that's a great, great honor, and thank you for representing Middletown so well, and the state of Ohio. A couple things, 4th of July, I, you know, a lot of events coming up. I'm sure the mayor will cover those, but 10 fingers, 10 toes. If you started out with eight, make sure you, you still have eight at the end of the night. When it comes to downtown, to kind of back up what Paul was saying, our, our timelines are aggressive, so that way, it becomes a priority for everyone. Doesn't matter if you're a business owner, property owner downtown, a resident, staff member, even holding us accountable up here, it's, it's to bring it to the front, because there's a million issues going on in the city, and we can, we can stay in the weeds with a lot of these, but my preference is, and, and I know a lot of folks up here, our preference is, let's bring out some of these larger issues, let's set aggressive timelines. They're, they're goals. They're, I mean, we move stuff left and right on the schedule all the time. I don't think it's, I, I don't think it's, it's, you know, something that hard and fast in August, it's, that's an extremely aggressive timeline. I, I do agree, but the, the idea behind it was to make sure everyone realized, like, wait, this, this is real. This is tangible. We're not going to say, oh, Q4, Q1. No, 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 we're going to say, hey, by such-and-such date, this is what we'd like to do. And so, you know, I've spoke to many residents in the city, business owners, property owners, downtown, outside of downtown. Everybody has, you know, a wide range of opinions. Some people are like bulldozers at all, start completely over. A lot of people say, hey, save everything, no matter what. And a lot of people are somewhere in the middle, right? I, I do, I do agree with Jade's request, if, if you'd like to have a couple more work, you know, working groups with staff on the RFQ. You know, the RFQ was something we had discussed many, many months ago, and so let's give it one more shot, because when the last, when the last contract fell through on these properties, we felt, and the, and the previous council felt that that developer, I mean, they were 100% legit, but we don't really know why they, they backed out in the end, which is kind of why, you know, we're kind of left hanging. So I, I think we can, I, I think we can, we can definitely say, hey, you know, if you want a couple more meetings with staff, I know I'm going to meet with many of you folks next week to kind of discuss things. But, you know, like Paul said, I mean, I, I think a lot of people sort of forget, or it just seems so long ago, the economic troubles that this city really had in recent, in recent decades. And we're in a much better spot now, and we have some, some resources available, whether it be at the state level or county level, not only human resources, but financial resources that are available now that weren't around decades ago. So I mean, I, I'm completely fine with, with shifting the timeline to the right, because I want to make sure that, you know, nobody wants to tear a building down if, if you, if you feel like you've done everything that you can do to try and entice developers to look at it. That's, I don't think many people feel that way. I mean, I'm, I'm sure there are some folks in the city that, that might feel that way, but the majority of people, they want to know that, hey, we're, we're trying to bring historic developers in, into the city. So I, you know, I'm completely fine with, you know, Paul, with what you said, moving it to the right. August was just a goal that was set out there, but again, I mean, a lot of projects slide to the right. I, I really appreciate all of the citizens that are not only working with staff, but the citizens that, that are getting involved with, with this. It's a heavy ask. There's a lot going on. I've spent a lot of time on the phone, and people are saying, hey, this is what we're researching, this is what we're doing. We've been having discussions at the county level. There's a lot of knowledge at the county level with, with what's been done in Hamilton. So it, it's good to see, and I appreciate everybody coming out, you know, to the meetings. If you want, you can email, call, text me. I'm mostly around in town, so I, I would definitely make time to grab coffee, grab lunch. That's not a problem at all. So thank you, guys. I truly appreciate it.
Mr. Horn, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, it's great to see people getting involved with our city. I know sometimes city council meetings can be a little bit boring and such, but when people get involved, it makes it more better for all involved. And, and that, you know, the, the comments that are made at times, you can say whatever you want about me, guys, I don't care. Yes, I was appointed, but I was appointed by three people who was voted by citizens, so that's fine. I would suggest we, and we can vote on this or discuss it, I think Saturday, October 4th would be a good date. That gives all involved a full, because we just entered the second quarter or the third quarter, so that gives you a full quarter, and then by that time, you'll have all the information you need, you will, you will have all the contacts. I've shared all my contacts, all my discovery with Gabe. I have. And I want him to have all the discovery he has with all the people that he can talk to, and more. But I think that gives them plenty of time. Nothing's going to happen to that building from now till October, aside from if we get massive rain and more water goes down into the structure and causes more damage. But I would suggest that maybe we consider it as a council, that's the first Saturday in October, that is officially the third quarter. We don't have a city council meeting till the following Tuesday, and that gives them all the time to meet with the city, have their meetings, keep on gathering your discovery, keep gathering. And if you think about it, when you put out an RFQ or an RFP, they usually have to give them 30 days to respond. You can't just say, here it is, and then hope that someone comes the next day with a brilliant plan. You have to give the developers, the innovators, the, the construction managers, all the time to get it together so they can provide a proper plan together. So that usually, they have to give them 30 days regardless. So hopefully, my colleagues will consider that, because that gives everyone a full quarter, because like I said, we just entered into the third quarter, that gives you all the third quarter, and then, then October 4th, the decision will be made, because we'll have all the information. That also gives the city a little bit more time, gives Larry Tuttle more time to get the information, because I've asked for additional information. Because, consider this, and this is real, and you can check me on this. In Hamilton, Joshua Smith, who was their city manager for 13 years, he actually got a historical grant, $25 million. That's a lot of money. Took him five years to get that. So there's two things that come to my mind, being a businessman. Number one, that roof, roofs on just the Manchester was supposed to be repaired when the last deal fell through in 2014. So that was 11 years ago. So no matter what happens, those roofs have to be redone, just to keep the structure together for the one year, two years, five years it's going to take to get the historical grants together. And believe me, I'm for that. The second item, inflation happens. So if we, there's a budget of $30 million, and this goes for five years, the inflationary index normally is 1% to 2%. Let's go high, just for fun. So you also have to make sure that there's not a $3 million shortfall on a $3 million project that go, that doesn't start for five years. Again, I'm giving you discovery, you need to have all your information, because all of us swore to be fiscally responsible to the city, the, the company that our city manager runs. We want the best for Middletown, as you will see in an upcoming, on our report. I'm going to speak highly of something that we need to help out. One suggestion to your groups. One suggestion to your groups, I, I appreciate the, the listings of all, all the ones that you listed. I would also list the, the Windermere. I would list, list the art, the Pendleton Art, the Middletown Art Center. What we're trying to accomplish downtown, because I agree, the new shiny coin is going to be out east. All the new stuff, that's all new. There's nothing historical. But from what my experiences in older cities that have a downtown that actually have survived, it is arts. It is the unique things. It's the things that, it's, it's like, I'm not going to see this in, in a new structure. I agree with that totally. So highlight everything and everybody, whether it's publicly or privately owned. That's what we're trying to draw. I've always said, and you can check the, the Youtubes on this, that we need to be an event destination. Then people will say, hey, this is great. I don't want to drive a half an hour. I want to live here, and maybe I want to work here. That is the accomplishment we're trying to do with the park that we're going to put there across from the, the Sunny Building. And everything else that we're trying to accomplish. It just can't be the Manchester, as I had a conversation with Gabe. You have to look down the street. You can save the Manchester, but if you don't save everything else, it's for naught. Because who's going to live there and not have nothing to do? And have to drive someplace else or drive out east? So yes, I agree with everything that's everyone's saying here, that we need to do something as a whole, but it's going to take a lot of sweat equity, and it's going to take a lot of money. And it's going to take people getting involved in finding these grants and finding these things. But Mayor, I mean, we could put that in new business or old business when we come up toward the end of the meeting. But I would just, that gives them a full quarter, and I think that's more than fair. Because that gives the city more time to get more quotes together for things that we need, more meetings that you want to have to get engaged. And that is awesome that you guys are engaging with, with our, with our city, because that's what you should do. And then it gives times for people to respond to the RFQ. So by in October, we can make that final decision, and then we live with it. We have to live with the decision as a good council or a bad council. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to start also by just congratulating Dr. Millian as well. Thank you to everybody who came out to support her. She is always at events and just always so elegant and, and supporting us. And I always, I really appreciate all you've done for Middletown. Keep up the good work. Also, looking forward to hearing back. I know one of the things that we're doing now is scanning the cards that the citizens make, the comment cards. So it's important to put the, the items that you're talking about on here. Those will go to staff, and then they will be able to follow up with you. So one of the things I'm looking forward to is hearing what, what Mrs., Ms. Gaston was saying about water. That was interesting. Would like to hear more about that. I'm also regarding the, the ask for a different date and also more meetings before, like one or two more meetings with the Downtown Refresh. I'd like to discuss that as well. I think that is something that we are amenable to. As far as the October 4th date, I'd love to have staff, downtown committee, kind of look at that date to see if that's a possibility, if that could work. If not, that date may be one that could regarding, and considering all the things that need to get done. So I'd definitely amenable to that as well. And then I'd like to go ahead and talk about the things that are coming up in Middletown, as I love to do. So as we know, it's Fourth of July weekend, and we have lots of fun coming up. So please do join us at Smith Park, located at 500 Titus Avenue this Thursday, July 3rd, for the City of Middletown Independence Day Festival. The event starts at 4:00 PM. There will be a free Kid Zone and face painting and inflatables. Ashley and the Authority and Crown Watts will be performing. There will be the Team Fast Track's flag jump that day, plus the pyro jump and fireworks that start at 9:45. They're always wonderful. I would like to thank Nicole Clark and her team at Public Works and our Middletown Fire and Police Departments, plus our Butler County EMA, that's our emergency management agency, for all they do to make this festival so incredible. Please come out and celebrate our nation's independence. The next day, July 4th, Friday, we have two concurrent events. Beginning at a special time is DMI's First Friday Yankee Doodle Sidewalk Sales. Due to the Fourth of July Parade, DMI will be hosting First Friday with special hours. These are 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The DMI booth will be at Governor Square, located at 1049 Central Avenue. The downtown businesses will have sales and specials, including sidewalk sales at selected businesses. For more information, please do visit the calendar at downtownmiddletown.org. The Middletown Independence Day Parade begins that same day, Friday the 4th, at 10:00 AM, leaving from Smith Park and, as Mr. Lys said, traveling up Central Avenue. Please do bring water and fans if you have them. It's going to be hot, but to come out and celebrate. Ladies, have you ever been interested in learning more about craft beer? Here is your opportunity. Wednesday, July 9th, from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM at New Ale's Brewing, located at 1330 Manchester Avenue in downtown. Joined for a fun, approachable beer class designed just for women. No experience needed, just curiosity and a love for beer. The $10 fee covers the class, beer tasting, and snacks. For more information, please visit the calendar at downtownmiddletown.org. Later, we're going to be talking about an event coming up on July 10th, but I will not steal Mr. Clayton Castle's thunder. I will let him do that. Since 1968, the Greek Festival at Saints Constantine and Helen has been one of the premier cultural events in Middletown. On behalf of the entire parish community, they invite attendees to go Greek for a day, and thus to immerse in the Hellenic culture and zest for life. Enjoy their delicious food and desserts, and discover more about the Eastern Orthodox faith while touring their magnificent church. The festival is next Saturday, July 12th, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, located at 2500 Grand Avenue. For more information, please visit gosaintsconstantineandhelen.org. The next Moam or Middletown Open Air Market is next Sunday, July 13th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, across from Gravel Road Brewing Company downtown, located at 916 First Avenue. Please save the date for the Ohio Challenge, taking place July 18th and 19th at Smith Park at 500, 500 Titus Avenue. There is something for everyone at this festival, and it is sure to delight. Come join thousands of people from all over the region for this wonderful local event. For more information, please visit the Ohio Challenge on Facebook. Did you know that Middletown was part of a 248-mile canal that spanned from Cincinnati on the Ohio River to Toledo on Lake Erie? And that whenever you drive on Verity Parkway, also known as South Canal Street, you're driving over the canal that was eventually filled and paved over? Please save the date for the Canal Ceremony, hosted by the Middletown Historical Society on Monday, July 21st, at 11:00 AM. For more information, please visit downtownmiddletown.org. Please also save the date for the Canal Days Bicentennial Festival on Saturday, July 26th. There will be a car show, parade, entertainment, and historic fun and activities for all ages. To learn more, please again, visit that calendar at downtownmiddletown.org. And as a reminder, the City of Middletown accepts applications for our boards and commissions throughout the year. So if there is something that you have an interest in and you wish to give back to your city in this way, please do submit your application. To learn more, please visit the city's website at cityofmiddletown.org. There are many ways to get with, involved with your community and give back. Join a board or committee, run for office, apply for a job with the city, volunteer at the hospital, pick up trash in your neighborhood or park, plant a garden in your yard, smile at a neighbor, find joy and satisfaction for a job well done in whatever work you do, or just have a positive and giving attitude. Find something that you can do regularly and give back. We are all connected, and we are all in this together. The care for our city is an adventure in which we all get to share. That is all from me, and this concludes our council comments. All right, next on the agenda, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is regarding the City of Middletown 2026 Tax Budget. Law Director Alex Ewing, you have the floor for the swearing in. Thank you. Next, I would like to invite our Finance Director Samantha Zimmerman to the podium, and she will present.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So every year, the city is required by Ohio Revised Code to annually prepare and submit the tax budget to the county by July 15th. We are required to have a public hearing as part of this process. The purpose of the tax budget is to establish the 2026 estimated resources or revenues that may be appropriated and spent in the 2026 budget, and demonstrates our need for the 2026 property taxes. The tax budget does not set or limit council's ability to adjust, increase, or decrease the permanent budget resolution that will be passed later this year in November. The County Budget Commission reviews the budget for reasonableness of our tax levies. After they review, the resolution accepting the rates is returned for council for approval, likely sometime in August. The city currently levies 6.9 mils, 2.75 of which are restricted in use. One of those is for the fire levy, one for the capital improvements, 0.6 mils for the police and fire pension, and 0.15 mils for the Miami Conservancy. The remaining 1.4, 1.15 mils, sorry, 4.15 mils goes to the general fund. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do we have any questions or comments from council at this time about the tax budget? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we can have anyone that wishes to speak in support. Please go ahead and raise your hand. Seeing none, we will continue. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will continue. And anyone who would like to speak on a neutral basis, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will continue. Unless you have anything else to say, Ms. Zimmerman, that we'll go ahead and conclude the public comment portion at this time. And then we encourage you to stay, though there will be no further public comment and no interruptions. At this point, we have council deliberations. Is there anything that any council member would like to say as far as deliberation? All right, no. Seeing none, then we will go ahead and move on. Is there anything that we need to do before that, Mr. Ewing? Okay, so we go ahead, and this concludes the first public hearing. The second public hearing this evening is regarding a map amendment and zone change and preliminary development plan for an assisted living facility and multifamily apartments. Again, Mr., our law director, Mr. Alex Ewing, you have the floor for swearing in. Thank you, Mr. Ewing. At this time, I would like to invite our city planner Claire Fetters to the podium for her staff report.
Good evening. I do want to give a little update on how I'm approaching presentations. They are, be a little bit more streamlined compared to your staff report. I tried this out at Planning Commission for the June meeting. I think it went over pretty well, so you are seeing the updated format for you tonight. Same information as the staff report, just a little more condensed. So this is a request by Bill Morton of Leo Brown Group for approval of a map amendment and preliminary development plan for a 124-unit assisted living facility that will have amenities including dining options, a movie theater, fitness center, library, chapel, activity center, game center, as well as a 144-unit multifamily apartment addition to be constructed on the parcel listed. The parcel is a total of 10.79 acres. With this proposal, the applicant requests waivers from Middletown Development Code, Table 1204-3 currently. We are still waiting additional information to assess if any additional waivers would be needed. So for property background, this is a vacant undeveloped parcel. The last transfer date of the property was in March of 2025, according to the Butler County Auditor. Currently, there is right-of-way on the northern edge of the property, but there is no existing road. Hendrickson Road would need to be continued from its stub for roadway access. Additionally, the right-of-way that currently exists to the north of this parcel does not match the width needed to match the, sorry, this is a lot of widths. The width of right-of-way that is currently known as Hendrickson Road up into that parcel. So additional consideration is needed regarding public roadway improvements and the involvement of private property owners north of the proposed development to ensure that the right-of-way matches current Hendrickson Road. This subject property is currently zoned I-1. The purpose of I-1 is to provide areas for development of industrial uses that have a minimum impact upon the surrounding environment. The district is primarily designed to accommodate the retention and expansion of existing industrial-type uses, which can be operated in a clean and quiet environment, subject only to those regulations and performance standards necessary to prohibit congestion and for the protection of adjacent residential and business activity areas. So getting into the staff analysis, in the review of the application submitted as compared to the city's adopted plans and regulations, staff finds the following. As for Table 1204-3, the two proposed uses, skilled nursing facility and multifamily dwellings, are currently prohibited in the I-1 zoning district. As for Chapter 1204, 7, Part B, Part 15, the proposed planned development district does exceed the minimum acreage requirement by proposing a total of 10.79 acres to be established as the planned development district. The applicant is not proposing to use the planned development district for a single building and/or use. However, alternate uses that could be substituted for any of the initial, the two initial uses allowed in the district have not been identified. Getting into site development standards, the proposed building elevations show the heights of the various buildings, showing the heights of the various buildings were not received in the preliminary development plan submitted. The applicant will need to submit sufficient plans to be reviewed for compliance with the regulations set forth in Chapter 1204 of the Middletown Development Code. The applicant's site plan shows the building setbacks are in compliance with the site development standards of the current zoning district. So before you is the most recent site plan. In the review of the architectural standards, building elevations were not received for the multifamily dwellings. The applicant will need to submit sufficient plans to be reviewed for compliance in Chapter 1210 of the Middletown Development Code. However, the site plan provided by the applicant shows the six proposed apartment buildings are not in compliance with Chapter 1210-03, Part A, Part 2, Part A, as they are not oriented to a public road. As you can see, this is pulled, these two images are pulled straight from our development code in terms of, the image on the left is a positive practice, an acceptable architectural design for multifamily dwellings. The image on the right is designated as unacceptable architectural design for multifamily dwellings. And this, what the applicant is proposing is a variation of what is on the right. Lastly, further clarification is needed from the applicant regarding the proposed exterior building materials for the skilled nursing facility. Here are the proposed building elevations of the skilled nursing facility. Getting into parking, the applicant proposes a total of 71 parking spaces for the skilled nursing facility, in excess with the minimum parking spaces required for a group living use category. The applicant proposes a total of 212 parking spaces for the multifamily dwellings, four parking spaces less than the parking requirements for multifamily units. However, we do have a provision in our development code that the applicant may propose up to 10% less without needing an administrative waiver or variance. The applicant proposes a 1.85% reduction, well within that 10% reduction. And then as for Chapter 1208, 1216, and 1220, a lighting plan, landscaping plan, and signage plan were not submitted with preliminary development plan application. The applicant, the applicant will need to provide adequate plans to be reviewed for compliance with the city's outdoor lighting, landscaping, and buffering and signage regulations. Moving into our comprehensive plan, the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map indicates the property in question is located in the regional mixed-use land use category, which is defined as primarily commercial uses that cater to I-75 traffic and regional market with secondary uses that include office, medical, service, and residential. We also have another map in our comprehensive plan that is known as the Development Opportunities Map. This property is located in the Crossroads Development Opportunity Area, which is to contain a mixture of shopping centers of varying size, age, and condition, with a mix of residential at the northeast and southeast corner of Roosevelt Boulevard and Brielle Boulevard. Due to its strategic location, proactive steps will need to be taken to recruit complementary development within this area. The development will result in rehabilitated shopping centers and new mixed-use pedestrian-friendly developments located through, next to major thoroughfares. Also, in our comprehensive plan, we do have a Transportation Infrastructure Chapter. Also in our comprehensive plan, we do have a transportation infrastructure chapter. Hendrickson Road is identified as a roadway that will require future extension to the west to extend the current stub of Hendrickson Road to Braille Boulevard. The extension of Hendrickson Road to intersect with Braille Boulevard will add another secondary east-west connector in the city's growing east side. So the connection of this road to Braille Boulevard is desirable. However, getting to the middle town housing policy adopted in 2019, there were 12 global issues identified. I'm not going to read all of them, but of the 12 global issues identified, the proposed development is in conflict with the housing buffer around heavy industry areas, as the majority of the planned development district falls within the 1,000-feet buffer of the heavy industrial area. Additionally, the proposed development, specifically the multifamily component, is in conflict with rental housing and overabundance of less competitive housing global issues. Public notice was provided. The only comment I got was a phone call when I issued the first legal ad, just asking where the parcel was, because nobody really goes by parcels, and the resident spoke neither for nor against the request. As for the other department comments, they have not changed from Planning Commission. City Management Office provided comments regarding further discussions on public roadway improvements. The Community Economic Development Department requests additional clarification on the light tech aspect of the development, actually for both portions as we are finding out, as well as further explanation on the continued ownership of the property. The proposed elevations are not desirable currently. And Public Works Engineering did state a traffic impact study will be required, as well as a storm water management plan. Health Department is concerned about maintenance, as well as ensuring there is a market to support this. And lastly, Building Inspection is concerned about proposed internal access, more so for the multifamily aspect, as seniors cannot often climb three flights of stairs, and a sprinkler system in the assisted living facility would be required. Lastly, Division of Fire provided some additional comments for this meeting. There is concern about the turning radius for the tower ladder truck. It looks like the turn would be tight and could cause issues for access for not only the tower, but the fire engines as well. As for this potential development being housed right next to Arlington Point, there are a number of calls for service from 2023, 2024, and 2025, so there is concern about doubling the type of use next to the existing facility and this becoming a strain on public safety. Here is the application. I know it's a little blurry, but there is a narrative provided by the applicant, the letter of intent, the floor plan layout for the assisted living facility. As for staff recommendation, I did go ahead and include this. Staff recommends, should city council move to approve the application, staff recommends substitute uses be named for the planned development in addition to the skilled nursing facility and multifamily dwellings in the event they are not feasible. And the architectural standards for multifamily dwellings be upheld, including building orientation, building materials, windows, indoors, utility boxes, and architectural features. Planning Commission provide, I have a typo. Planning Commission provided the following recommendation of approval after hearing, after reviewing the application and hearing testimony from the applicant and the public, the Planning Commission voted six to nothing to make a recommendation of approval. Lastly, here is your review criteria, and I will conclude my staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Fetters. Next, we would like to invite our applicant, Mr. Bill Morton, to the podium of Leo Brown Group.
Bill Morton, 12411, Carmel, Indiana, partner at Leo Brown Group, real estate development.
I'm sorry, for the record, would you please restate that you were sworn in? Just affirm that, please.
I'm sorry?
Just reaffirm that you were sworn in.
Okay, confirm that I've been sworn in.
Thank you, I forgot to do that previously. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just happy to answer any questions. I thought we had a very productive planning meeting. Counselor Horn was present. Appreciate working with staff over the past six weeks, and happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Does council have questions or comments? Okay.
I'll ask some questions, and you guys can. So what this is, is they already have a senior facility before that on Hendrickson Road, and you want to put another one there.
Yeah, I think we need to clarify the nomenclature that we use, so thank you for mentioning that. The facility currently in operation is a skilled nursing facility. We'd be a personal care home, so different levels of acuity. So the folks in the skilled nursing facility, Arlington Point, technically require 24/7 care, heavier clinical staff. And our, our community is going to be three stories, but these folks are very mobile. They're able to get up and go to the cafeteria slash dining room, some level of exercise and other activities within the building, so it's a much lighter level of care. So often called assisted living.
Okay, so what this is, because I've seen this before in other, other locations, so it's, it's folks who just, they don't want to, they want to be around other people, and, but yet they do not want to have to take care of a home, do, on any maintenance, so this is, this is where they go, this is what I call, and I'll use the, the place's name, Otterbine, this is like their phase one, before they go to the next level, which they need more assistance, so this is.
This might be level two compared to Otterbine, but that's a good analogy, yes, exactly. And that we do qualify each resident, so they typically would need assistance with activities of daily living, so that might be taking medication, getting dressed, but it is by no means 24/7 care. That would be Arlington Point, and that's what attracted us to the location. There are a lot of efficiencies and overlap synergies, if you will, by being co-located.
So you have that, we'll call that the, the main structure.
Correct.
And you, it's because you have extra land, what you're also saying is you want to build three-story condos, building, or living dwellings, single-family dwellings also on that property. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Go ahead, describe that.
Yeah, so that would be six three-story multifamily buildings that are a total of 144 units, and the idea is there, it would be, I mean, it'd be available to anyone, but it's going to be really attractive to those 60 and older, to be close to the, the senior care that is right next door. It would not be age-restricted, but it will be really age-marketed, age-targeted.
Right, so then the concern of our, of our, of our fire department of doubling on the calls, these folks, they might still have an emergency, but not as much as the folks that are before them in that senior care.
Be significantly less. We would, we typically see two a month, emergency runs.
Okay, because I mean.
To our existing communities, we manage 20 of those in Indiana and Ohio.
To me, I understand the concern, but I also see revenue, and that means we could, if, if, if we had more calls, then we have a brand-new fire station, which would be probably your fire station, that would actually potentially, we'd have to put more, we'd have to bring more fire paramedics onboard to take care of that, as long as the, the projected calls are there. Okay, so, and the other part of it, which I kind of like, is that Hendrickson Road, and this is way down the road, if we're still in the preliminary, before we even think about sending this back to, to Planning Commission, but then Hendrickson Road actually could go all the way to Braille, where Hills is. Hills used to be, that, that's the area we're talking about. So that actually could open up and give them, give us more access for citizens and have someone have to drive all the way around and such. So, okay, that's.
So in the 124-unit assisted living facility, how, how many staff are going to be in there?
Forty to 50.
How many?
Full-time.
How many over a 24-hour period?
That's a good question.
And then what number of staff, the number of staff, are they going to have some type of medical training, or what level of certifications?
Absolutely, yes. Certified nurses, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, but certified nursing assistants that are trained, there will be an RN in the building.
On a 24-hour basis?
Correct, yes. All, we would comply with all the state licensure for assisted living, yes. Total payroll is probably around $2 million. So the first shift is obviously the heavier shift. I don't have the numbers, I could probably dig them up and provide them, but heavier first shift, less on second shift, and then obviously even less on the, on the third shift.
I see something here under Traditions accepts and processes Medicaid. We may not have Medicaid in a couple of months from now, so how, give me a price of a unit.
So we will be accepting the Ohio Medicaid waiver, and we are applying for that in August, so the residents really, their payment would be around $1,000, and oftentimes that's by their social security, and then the Medicaid waiver takes care of the balance.
But if we don't have Medicaid waiver, it would cost more, right?
We're using low-income housing tax credits for our financing, so we, we were going to be required to use Medicaid, similar to the skilled nursing facility next door, which is 100% Medicaid.
Okay.
Long-term care Medicaid, it's slightly different. The state of Ohio is really pushing this level of care, it's a lower-cost setting for the, for the Medicaid program. For example, the market rate, if it were private pay, for assisted living communities, about $5,000 a month, nursing care is $10,000 a month.
So I see the, the benefit, because to me, this is two different things. The, the, the care portion of it, and then the, because you have extra land, you want also build some, some living areas. But the way I, the reason why I, I appreciate you bringing this to us, is that we, we're an older city, and we have, fortunately, our citizens are living longer, and we want them to have the ability to have a place to go and live, and not have to worry about maintaining their properties, because, and we actually have a program called SELF that helps out for folks who are 65 and older, but some people are just, the point was like, I don't want to take care of this anymore, and I need someplace to go. And, and like you said, this is the, the step before you have to go to the full nursing care where you are having those issues. So I think, see this as a benefit, that, that this, this can be utilized. Again, all the things that the, the city is requiring on the architectural, on the requirements for licensing and everything else, that has to be satisfied before it, before it gets back to Planning Commission, if it gets to Planning Commission. But I, I see that this helps our, our older citizens that want to continue to be active, and, and you're relative, not, you're not the closest to our parks, but you are where you are. And I understand the concern that you're near an industrial area, which is called a Cliffs, which is a steel mill, which we're kind of all surrounded by, but I, I understand that, too. But I see a benefit to this, the first portion of it, the second portion of it, that's, that needs to be kind of worked out a little bit, because I, I agree with, 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 with the city planner says and what everyone says. Doesn't matter, if, after you hit 60, 65, three stories is, is hard, and I understand on, this is on the single-family stuff, this is not on that, this. And not to, not to have an elevator in the, in these structures, which is your choice, because you can say, anyone can live there, it's not just, because if you label it that way, then you, then state of Ohio does kick in on the industrial building codes.
We would have first-floor units, though, so a portion of those would be, but I.
I, I understand, but, but that's what I'm saying, is, is, so this is almost like two different things, we're trying to put them together. So the, the first part, I really appreciate, the second part, yes, we, we need more density, and that's, and we're noticing other places that are getting the same situations, and they're, they're just flying up with apartments and condominiums. So it's something that I think is necessary, especially for our older citizens, so that's all I got, Mira.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I, I just have a couple of things. My real concern is calls for service. I mean, that, you know, knowing behind the scenes on the east end, you know, there, it's sort of a structured growth out there, and so, you know, higher density, I understand your approach is, is pretty, it's scaled, right? You're not bringing in a traditional facility that's 24-hour, you know, around-the-clock care, but it's, it's a risk to, to the residents that, you know, especially in, in the surrounding communities. Calls for service, that's, that's my concern, but I can see where it's, it's density, but it's not density in a traditional manner with some of the numbers that we see with other assisted living facilities. The other thing is, and this is just my personal recommendation, is, you know, all the, all the information that Mrs. Fetters put in front of us, you know, the architectural standards, all of those things, like, I would recommend, you know, adhering to those, and, and I look forward to seeing, you know, additional renderings, but, you know, again, I mean, I, I would almost have to have some conversations with city staff, and especially the, the fire chief, you know, to make sure, like, hey, are we, are we postured up, you know, for any more density in, in senior living? It's something that we're going to address, you know, hopefully in next year's budget, but in the meantime, like, we kind of understand where the numbers are in the city and, and with Medic crews and, and the engines currently, so, but thank you, I appreciate it.
I can assure you, our staff is fully trained to handle this level of care, and their, their first response is not to dial 911. We manage 23 buildings, we've got a little over 2,000 employees that are trained, and that's a com, this is a common discussion that we have when developing, so appreciate your point, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I do have some myself as well. So just for clarification, for the assisted living section, is this open to any age group? It's only like 65 and over?
Sixty-five and older.
Only?
Only.
Okay. And, let's see here. Who will be managing the assisted living units?
Be, our company would be an affiliate of Traditions Management, so.
Leo Brown, okay. And that will be, so the continued ownership of the properties will be under the same?
Required to maintain ownership for 15 years.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I didn't realize, I just heard tonight, that there will not be elevators in the multifamily?
At this time, that is, that is the schematic plan and design, correct?
Why is that? I think for, because of, because of just, I'm sorry, I just want to say, because of society in general, we're not as healthy as we once were, I feel like elevators would be necessary now.
Well, it's really the economics. It's pretty common now for apartments in various settings to be three-story, we call them walk-up apartments. I mean, there, it's also common to have suburban elevators, but based on the rent and the economics of this project, it, it appeared it needed to be the three-story walk-up.
Would there be a freight elevator for, like, furniture?
No elevators in the.
None, okay.
On multifamily portion, on the assisted living portion, we would have three elevators, absolutely, yes.
Wonderful. Also, so I guess the next, it seems like there's a lot of work that needs to be done before we can really see clearly the vision. So, like was said earlier, we need all the building, well, we need the multifamily building elevations, the site plan, the lighting plan, landscaping plan, signage plan, clarification for road and emergency ingress and egress, traffic study, storm water maintenance plan, there's a lot we need to see.
Sure, yes, yes.
So I guess that's, that's all I've got right now, I kind of concur.
It was my understanding we could work it out with, in the detailed development plan with our team, and look forward to that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from, from the council at this time? No? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Morton.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak in support? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will continue. Is there anyone this evening who would like to, is opposed, like to speak in opposition? Please raise your hand. Thank you, we will continue. Does anyone wish to speak in a general nature? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will continue. If the applicant wishes to speak, well, unless time you're able, but if you're, if you're fine, we will conclude that part. This does conclude the public comment portion of the public hearing, and now we will continue to, council deliberations, we encourage you to stay, though there will be no further public comment and no interruptions. Counsel, is there anything that you'd like to say at this?
Yes, I'd like to add, unfortunately, I cannot support this development.
And now we will continue to, council deliberations, we encourage you to stay, though there will be no further public comment and no interruptions. Uh, council, is there anything that you'd like to say at this?
Yes, I'd like to add. Unfortunately, I cannot support this, uh, development, and I'm going to tell you, this is going to be a burden on the Division of Fire for calls for services. We see several of these type of, uh, of, of establishments in town, and they, they, there is a significant call for service at these facilities that are causing, uh, a, a burden on the Division of Fire because of our aging population. Anytime you get assembly of 65-plus age group, we see a significant number of runs because of the natural medical issues you see. And these facilities have skilled staff. But it turns out, well, we can't take further care of them here, so we're going to have to call 911. So, it, it's simply based on the, the calls for service burden, this is going to cause the Division of Fire at our current staffing, I, I just cannot support it, because it's going to be, uh, without a doubt. I mean, you just look at our calls for services at these facilities, and actually, the numbers you got today, half of, we had several other nursing homes that weren't even on that list of the runs, the calls for service yearly that you got. I mean, there was a few nursing homes that aren't even on, the, these places, they, they tax our public safety services. And in fact, I, I would like staff in our law department to start looking at, I, I think we need to come up with a moratorium in this city on extended living facilities until we can impact, or we can implement some type of an impact fee that takes into account, uh, cost recovery for the Division of Fire and the Police Department um, for responses to these types of facilities. And then, in, in addition, there, if, if, when, uh, Ms. Fetter's was giving her presentation, I, I just think also, there's just too many issues that are in conflict with many areas of the code. And therefore, I, I just can't support it, but mainly because of the burden it's going to place on the Division of Fire. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Lally. Any other comments at this point from council? One of the things I'm thinking about a lot as well is just the location, because it is right next to Cleveland Cliffs, and we do need a health buffer between, um, residents. Right now, the trees are offering that, so one of my ideas is just thinking, how could we maintain a healthier buffer? Is that even possible? Just one of the things I'm thinking about as well. I would love, we have an aging population, we are going to need more, more places like this. I'm interested in seeing more, but I don't, like Mr. Lally was saying, right now, it, it's not a match for our criteria that we have. Any other comments at this time? All right. Um, unless there's anything else, Mr. Ewing for us? Okay, thank you, this concludes the public hearings for the evening.
So do we take a straw vote on that, or?
That's why I asked, no.
I mean, we have in the past.
Oh, okay, okay, if you'd like to, then I, can I rescind that then?
No.
No.
Could I ask a question really quickly, though? Um, to say yes would be, just to find more information, this is not a final vote, as far as how we feel. This is just, let's see what else is out there, so, uh, yes. So, okay, so could you clarify what we're voting yes and no to? Mm-hmm, but that would also allow us to see further?
Yes.
Planning? Yeah.
Point of order, uh, Mayor, okay, so, we're either going to tell them, nope, this is not happening, or yes, we need more information, if we're going to say, yes, we need more information, then we table it, and then we tell them, come back in 30 days with more information. But here's my concern, Paul Lally's already said no, and it's valid. See, I always think of numbers of, okay, get us more, get us, get us, get us another A, let's send two more fire, uh, paramedics, because that's, that's what we want, but that's not going to be the case, because you're like, no, Paul, we have to generate that money first, and we're going to tax what we have, then, okay, then I, then I'm definitely, you know, thinking differently. Uh, but I don't want to confuse it where yes or no is, if you say yes, and it's, as, as we always say, three votes, then it's not going to get tabled, he's done, because it's not going to go to planning commission.
Got you. But at this point, though, if we've already started the vote, in order to table, we would.
Right.
Right, we would have to.
Essentially, my no vote is like, nothing against Leo Brown, I just do not want to see any more extended living facilities in the city of Middletown.
And I don't like the location.
Okay, I, I just want to be clarified where we're, what we're doing.
Right.
So, at this point, then, tabling for further discussion would mean a no vote today? Or would we have to re, have a new motion to table? A new vote, motion to table? Um, is there, hmm, is there interest in tabling? That, is there? Right, but we still have three left.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
So, no, that's okay, well, is there interest in tabling? So that's the thing, is there a motion to table? No?
I mean, my, I mean, my concerns are just, uh, look, I know where we're staffed at with, with fire and EMS, and this is a, a large topic that, that we have to address in the next budget, and I know this would be years down the road, but again, every time we increase public safety numbers, it's, it can be de-scaled with these kind of projects. I mean, we have existing residents that, you know, we can't put at risk. We can hire 10 more, we can hire 10 more police officers, right? But, all it takes is, you know, God forbid, knock on wood, you know, uh, some violent crimes, or, you know, car thieves coming through up and down 75, and those 10 get diluted over. Same thing with fire and EMS, I mean, we can, we can add staffing, it's, it's a ton of money. It's a ton of money to add even one medic unit, you know, to the budget. And, uh, if you look at calls for service on some of the existing facilities, I mean, we have 250, 300 annually at facilities that, you know, are, are obviously smaller units in number compared to this, I understand this is a, a completely different scale, but, uh, the whole, the East End Fire Station, the brand-new Fire Station, could be almost 100% absorbed on one project. I, I don't think that's what a lot of residents really understand. It could be almost 100% absorbed, millions of dollars on the building, the equipment, and current staffing out there could be completely wiped out with one project.
So, no.
That's the reality, yeah, I mean, that's, that's just the reality, I mean, I'm not against having facilities like this, but under current staffing, it's, I mean, we're already strained.
So, uh, there's no motion to table, so we go back to the original vote, I'll still vote yes?
No.
Yes.
All right, and now, we are complete, correct, Mr. Ewing? Yes, okay, so this does now conclude the public hearing for the evening. Um, at this time, it is 7:20, I'd like to take a 10-minute break, uh, where we will reconvene at 7:30. Okay.
Your reports. So, City Manager Ms. Ashley Combs, you have the floor.
Good evening. So first, I'd like to have Clayton come down and talk about an exciting event that he's been working really hard on with the city of Middletown Schools. So Clayton.
Thank you, Ashley. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm here this evening with an important and exciting announcement regarding the Middletown Now podcast and celebrating one of Middletown's biggest and well-known success stories. As you probably know, Middletown native Kayla Harrison added another significant achievement to her storied and historic athletic career when she won the UFC Women's Bantamweight Title last month by defeating two-time champion Juliana Pena. With the win, she became the first woman to win both a UFC Championship and an Olympic Gold Medal. By the way, she has two Gold Medals for those who don't know. In just two weeks from tomorrow, Kayla will be in Los Angeles for the famed ESPY Awards where she is nominated in the category of Best UFC Fighter. But first, she'll make a stop in her hometown of Middletown, Ohio. I'm here to announce that on Thursday, July 10th, so next Thursday, at 6:30 PM, the city of Middletown, in partnership with Middletown City Schools, will be hosting a Kayla Harrison Homecoming Rally and live recording show of the Middletown Now podcast at the Wade E. Miller Arena at Middletown High School. Kayla will be introduced to a packed house, she will give remarks, then she'll sit down for a conversation about her life, her career, and what's next in her UFC journey. There will also be a few surprise guests along the way. She will then sign autographs for all of her fans after the event. The night is completely free and open to the public. We'll be releasing more details in the coming days. This is sure to be an exciting night for the city of Middletown as we celebrate one of our own for all of her incredible achievements. When I think about storytelling, it's my opinion that we cannot tell Middletown's story without telling Kayla's story. Anyone who knows Kayla's story will know she is an inspiration to all Middletonians and someone we can look to with great pride and admiration. Thank you for the time, and I hope to see you next Thursday at the arena.
And then if we could, could we display IT, the poster as well on the next slide?
There we go.
We do have an awesome poster that will be on social media within the next like 10 minutes or so.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Castle.
Okay, next up, I would like to invite down Tyler Roberts. He is going to give an update on the YMCA Monsoon Bay Project. Thank you, Tyler.
I want to first thank council, our mayor, and the city manager for allowing me to speak tonight on the updates as well as partnering with us to deliver the service to the city. So, we're very excited. We have, since construction truly began, it's gone as smoothly as a project of this size really could go. There's been some hiccups and bumps along the way, but every time we've had a delay, we've been able to make up time. And I really contribute that to the joint effort between Patterson Pools and Sarber Construction. So as of now, we are still on that, I think at the genesis of this project, we really wanted this open by June of this year. That obviously did not happen this year through a couple of different things that really was at the beginning of the project before the construction really began. So since then, really the target date has been by, at least by early September, and that's been our goal this entire time. We're still heading down that trajectory. This is a lot of the times where a good portion of the pool really starts coming together. A lot of Fort Nauter Water Park and all our constructions, projects that are like this. The last 45 days, 30 days, 15 days is where you kind of see everything come together. But all the groundwork, the buildings, the plumbing and things like that are the things that kind of take the most time. And then once you start seeing those decks be poured and things like that, that's where the pool really looks like it's getting buttoned up and together. Those are just tend to be the final finishes that kind of come at the last minute. So from the last update that I sent out to council, all the upcoming items of the pouring of footers for the nice outdoor slide have been put in. The slide is constructed and ready to be installed once we get to that point. So one of the big things that could have caused us a delay was the actual construction of the slide and then the slide being delivered. That is all on track, that the slide itself has been constructed and will then be put together on site. So there should be no delays seen there. We saw our first big delay really in the last 10 days, and that was over some concrete pouring. We think that we're able to make up some time. We have a trade meeting tomorrow to kind of look at that schedule. So our goal is to still open on early September and stay open this year as long as the weather permits. So our goal, even if that's just on weekends through October, when the weather's nice, we will stay open and committed as long as we're able to allow to between the air temperature and the pool temperature. So that's our commitment this year. That also helps the YMCA. It helps us be able to work out any of the logistics, especially for a nice big grand opening next year. But we're hoping that we'll be having that ribbon cutting, hopefully inviting council to go down the slide early September. And if anything changes on that, we will let you guys know right away. So get your swim trunks ready, swimsuits ready. Any questions from council?
Tyler, did you want to run through the pictures? There is a...
I didn't know if those were... Yeah, so here's kind of as the pool sits right now. And remember, those decks are kind of going to be one of the things that are last poured. One of the most important steps is getting that, those footers of the pool surrounding. The next thing that's going to go into those spaces right there, well, you'll start seeing the stainless steel start to go in. And you'll start seeing trenches reopen back up that's been opened prior, and you'll start seeing the plumbing working from the pool back to the pump house. To part of those, one of those items I was talking about, the makeup time, is a lot of times pool companies, when they're constructing, work from plumbing from pool to the building rather than building to the pool. Well, we can make up some time by allowing Sarber Construction to be working on the plumbing indoors while they're working on the pool. So Patterson Pools was able to make up some time, so they're actually going to work on the plumbing from the pump house back to the pool. And that's going to allow both projects to be running simultaneously. So the pool and the pump room will be ready to go on day one. So just another outline of those footers. Again, this project, this, the pool is a little bit longer than the original concepts, and we've added a couple of things. This project, it's about half a million dollars over budget, and some of those things we occurred because we feel like it was necessary. So part of it is the plumbing that's actually could go underneath the deck. So some of the plumbing that's actually going to go underneath the deck, best practice oftentimes used as galvanized piping. That kind of like A top-tier option would go with a higher-end stainless steel. A lot of pools don't go for that just because of cost. We decided, especially after seeing a lot of the cases surrounding us in both Ohio and Indiana where pools are closing primarily for those failures. And those failures being underneath concrete, to fix them, you have to do it during the season where the pool really would be open. You're tearing up concrete, nothing ever looks the same afterwards. So we've chosen to make some of those upgrades. In addition to that, we have also chosen to expand the fencing area as well out so that we can incorporate future expansions as well as incorporating drains and electrical and things where we need to in case we want to add splash pads, water features, things like that in the future. So we've absorbed some of those costs as well as some of the things on the retention wall that came up through the project. And it's, council was able to, and the city was able to provide $3 million, the Y has picked up the other, just over half a million is where we're at currently. All right, here's actually the front of the concession stand with two restrooms off to the right. And then as you go around the corner there, that's actually where your locker rooms are going to be. And then around the right-hand side, that's where the pump room is going to be. So that will be obviously away from all the public, but everything to the left and right there in the front will be where the concession stand and the restrooms and locker rooms are. Right there, that's the foundation I was speaking to earlier where the slide will be constructed, and we'll have that big dual slide. And then just another view of that zero entry into the water.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts. Are there any comments from council?
Just one.
Mr. Horn?
So since this season will not be a full season, I would like to request legal to write an addenda to the contract that your 20 years to our citizens, the $10 and $5 doesn't start till 2026 when you open up in May.
Oh yeah, we'll agree.
Okay, I just, we got to make sure it's all there.
Oh, yeah.
So we know when the time date starts. So I want that addendum written in there, and then you guys can work that out between you and the city manager. That the, because this is not going to be a full season. This is going to be mainly a soft opening, as they call it.
Yeah.
And fair's fair. I mean, you know, we understand construction, we understand weather and all that stuff. So because you, and I find that very gracious that you did that, that whether, you know, because things like this, they depreciate with maintenance and everything, and you're not saying, okay, as long as we have a good two or three years. You're just saying for the next 20 years, our citizens can come there and use this facility. $10 for adults and $5 for children, I greatly appreciate it, but we also have to be businesses' business. And the first full season will be the 26 season.
Yeah, we have no issues with that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council?
No, just thank you for the updates. Appreciate it, Tyler.
Yeah, looking good so far. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to invite down Nancy Griffith to give the Sorg Opera House project presentation.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? I brought my friend Larry because I guarantee you at least one time tonight, I'm going to be technically challenged.
And if Larry, if you are going to be speaking this evening, make sure you also speak into the microphone so we can record. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mayor Slampka, and members of council for having us this evening. We appreciate the positive comments and event promotions that many of you have given to the Sorg Opera House throughout your council comments and sessions as well as your attendance at the various events that we host. I'm Nancy Griffith, and I serve as the president of the nonprofit Sorg Opera Revitalization Group. Starting with the leadership of Chuck Miller, Denise Brodsky, Tim Bowman, Ken Bowman, and numerous community volunteers in 2012, we've continually been working in restoring and preserving the Sorg, as we affectionately call it. Working little by little to unpack and peel back the layers of history that Middletonians have imparted on it through its 134-year history. I'm here tonight with Larry Mulligan, Andy Seabert, Snyder Smith, and Sue Whitman, who are also members of the board at the Sorg. To give some context to this evening, we have a bridge timeline of the events and the different uses and ownerships that the Sorg has undergone for more than a century and help guide our principles and nonprofit dedication to its restoration and use for the Middletown community. The Sorg Opera House was spearheaded by Paul J. Sword and was one of the first dedicated concert halls in the area. As the need arose for theater with modernized safety, for the time, it was designed by Samuel Haniford &amp; Sons, the same firm that designed Cincinnati's Music Hall and Over the Rhine. You can see some of the shared architectural features and elements throughout the building, though on a smaller scale. As movies became more popular for entertainment and Middletown grew, other venues such as the Paramount and the Stran came and went. And this is the last historical one standing in Middletown. In its early life, the Sword hosted numerous national acts and national figures such as Broadway's Al Jolston and Sophie Tucker, comedian Bob Hope, and the famed orator and politician William Jennings Bryan. The Sorg Opera House twice hosted John Philip Sousa, who was connected locally to Middletown native and musician Frank Simon. Sousa, who also later introduced the American Bandmasters Association, an organization that exists into the present day as honorary life president with its first convention being held at our ever-popular destination item and Riesel Council meeting, the Manchester Inn. Later on in its life, the Sword transitioned from light operas and vaudeville performances into the ever-growing motion pictures with a sound system being installed in 1929. For many in Middletown, people remember the building as the Colonial Theater, which operated from the late 40s into the 70s as the primary tenant. For a few decades in the 80s and 90s, the Sorg Opera Company and the Whitewater Opera Company existed in the space, bringing back live theater performance. In 2006, the building was sold to Rode Apple Music, and a water main break in 2011 ultimately led to foreclosure. After a century of performances and shows, two-stage fires, and the Great Flood of 1913, the building was facing its most daunting challenge yet and looked to be headed towards demolition. However, in 2012, the collection of volunteers that would eventually be known as the Sorg Opera Revitalization Group purchased and began the work on the theater. An important note for us is that a lot of what we do involves sweat equity. We are an all-volunteer organization. It's an active borg, not an honorary title. A few highlights from our early years involved the clean-out and stabilization of the entire complex. In the wake of the prior ownership, much of the plumbing in the theater bathrooms were filled with cement mixes. Heating and cooling ductworks and pipes were ripped out for scrap. Piles of junk, dirty mattresses, and old couches filled the upper floors of the commercial building. Much of the circuit breakers, which include knob and tube wiring, boilers, light fixtures, and riggings were not kept on top of maintenance schedules. Along with the sweat equity, we applied for and were rewarded various grants to help finance and renovate our most dire needs, including the roof replacement, fire sprinklers, and HVAC systems. These projects aren't often visible or sexy, but the first need for historic preservation. When we could not fund it, we do our best to find in-kind donations or pro bono work for electricians, plumbers, trades, and craftsmen, and women who ultimately want to see this place succeed. When we bring in a contractor, some are brave enough, and a lot of them are afraid to even quote us the work. So a lot of this stuff is really cumulative of baby steps and big leaps. We wish we could move faster on a lot of our restoration despite headwinds like inflation, consumer confidence, water heaters deciding it's their time to pass, or gas bills from cold winters. We tried to move deliberately in our restoration, and we tried to do our best the first time around. For instance, in the lobby, there are signs of at least four renovations, some taking preservation into consideration more than others. We have tiles from the 30s along with wainscoting that we believe were added after the flood. On the same wall of the original plasterwork from the 19th century, both are hidden behind luster and tiles manufactured by Armco after the war and installed in what we would assume was the 40s and 50s. When we had a contractor in to improve the flashing on what would be called the Colonial Marquee, volunteers carried the standstone bricks that had Sorg's Opera House carved into the stone down three flights of stairs. I'm going to get emotional, I'm sorry. We wanted to preserve the important feature from the elements and construction in the event that we secured enough funding to restore the theater to its true original entrance. It may sound crazy, but sometimes we have to wait for the building to tell us what it wants first. One example was the removing of the false ceiling included in the Colonial Theater days. A big legend in town that there was a secret tunnel from the Sorg mansion to the theater so Paul Sword and his wife would not have to be seen by common folk. But most of the residents on Main Street were in fact the business tycoons that owned the factories and ran for public office. So Paul was amongst his peers. There were no secret tunnels, but in our best guess in research, the up-there balcony was a section with a separate entrance and box office to keep the working-class immigrants and minorities out of sight from the Middletown elite in the early days of Jim Crow laws that began to sweep the United States. Most of the operettas or vaudeville acts would involve minstrel shows and offensive racial caricatures. While we revealed the space, we want to move forward in a conscious effort without glossing over or shying away from the past, instead programming events and concerts for all of Middletown. We've been fortunate to receive contributions from various organizations and individuals, both large and small, to continue our mission of restoration. There are a few of these local organizations, but we've listed every person we would run out of room really fast and be here until the morning. On the other side of that token, the Sorg has reemerged as a gathering space and a landmark for the community. We've hosted numerous organizations for events, fundraisers, and performances in downtown Middletown, some of which are listed here. The Sorg has had many different eras in its lifetime, and we try to pay homage to that in both how we approach our preservation and also our event programming. We host tours on Sundays about once a month with our resident tour guide, historian, box office guru, and all-around great guy Joel Brown. The tour involves the theater and the backstage area, and are free to the public with an optional donation towards renovation efforts. Residents who are interested in touring can register in advance. Space on our tour is limited, but we try to schedule these frequently or add multiple windows to accommodate anyone who is interested. We have recently partnered with Middletown Lyric Theater to provide them with an old but new home to provide stage productions and musicals. In fact, they were one of the first organizations in the 80s to perform again on the stage when the Sword was converted back to a live theater venue. We have two Middletown lyric shows coming up this summer and fall with Sousicle the Musical in early August and a Rehearsal for Murder in September. To fill weekends between concerts and plays, we've begun to, see, I told you I'd screw something up. We've begun to show classic movies as part of our Colonial Mover series over the last few years. This also includes a morning screening for our crafting with the classics, where attendees can bring quilting, knitting, needlepoint, or any other crafting project with house lights in the theater turned up and the volume turned down low for folks to have a quiet place to work outside of their home or apartment. After our morning shows, we have a matinee and evening shows. All tickets and concessions for each movie are kept at a reasonable price so the community members can enjoy the third space outside of home to work with family or friends. The proceeds from these events mainly goes towards to offsetting the cost of movie nights. Our next movie is Saturday, July 12th, with the 50th anniversary of Steven Spielberg's Jaws. Tying into our history as a classical performance venue and movie theater, we hosted the Butler Phil Harmonic Orchestra last fall. The ensemble performed the live score to the 1922 version of Nosferatu for a spooky Halloween-themed vampire event. This is the most recent performance of the Butler Phil at the Sorg, but we had the fortune of hosting them multiple times prior, including in 2017 when we were first able to host events again in the theater. While we're still able to host operas and operettas, we try to have something for everyone. When we think about programming events, we try to strive for variety, popularity, and quality. We have a lot of perennial favorites that have come through the doors, but sometimes we go off the beaten path. Last March, we hosted Here Comes the Mummies with about 450 patrons coming through the door. In 2022 and subsequent years, we've hosted tribute acts ranging from Hotel California and Night Fever and the Motown All-Stars with upwards of 600 to 700 concert and Night Fever and the Motown All-Stars with upwards of 600 to 700 concertgoers in what many would consider a full house. Something that's naturally grown in our community and our programming is what we would like to refer to as the Sorgh Opera Series. Thanks to the support of the Middletown Community Foundation and other charitable organizations, we've hosted nationally-recognized Grammy Award-winning performers who have awesome grapes the stages of Nashville. This includes Rhonda Vincent, the Oak Ridge Boys, Lori Morgan, Riders in the Sky, and my daughter would hate me if I didn't mention the Cleverleys. And hopefully more to come as we establish a regional draw to downtown Middletown. In looking at our ticket buyer data, we've had guests coming from more than 50 to 75 different zip codes, which is about a 25- to 50-mile radius from Middletown. This includes zip codes southeastern Indiana and northern Kentucky as well. We've also had people as far as from Michigan, Tennessee, South Carolina, Georgia, California, Oregon, and Alaska. According to our data of these events, overall, 70% of our patrons come from zip codes outside of Middletown. So we believe someone, when they say, "One, they've never heard of this place, and two, this is the first time visiting." Our next big leap is a $375,000 OFCC grant from the state of Ohio. We would like to thank everyone involved in advocating for this on our behalf, as well as the numerous city staff and the Sorgh volunteers that had a part of this. Part of the conditions of the grant is that we need to accrue all bids before the grant can be distributed, thank you, and work as well has to be completed and invoices paid before we receive the funds. So oftentimes, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place in paying in advance to book groups for the great events to bring people downtown, or using that income from the last act and sinking it into building renovations. There are a lot of overhead costs associated with concerts, and while it currently brings enough income to keep the lights on, it doesn't currently have enough to take us beyond the status quo. As we finish out this presentation, we want to look forward a bit to some of the challenges we face as an organization. We mentioned the increased cost of goods and building materials as one, but we also want to factor in concert and event experience for patrons. A lot of folks have difficulties in those sellout nights to find seats at restaurants. We think it's a seating capacity thing, but it's also due to wildly varying amount of people downtown versus a regular Tuesday. Some of the business owners we've talked to say we need more medium-density housing, such as market-rate condominiums and apartments, so residential foot traffic and staffing capacities can increase for these downtown amenities. We also have a huge need for overnight lodging downtown. We normally have to book towards the highway or even look at Monroe or Springboro to get a room blocking for touring musicians. As we've mentioned before, 70% of our patrons come from outside of a Middletown zip code, and we've had folks from as many as six to seven states buy one or multiple tickets for a concert. By my sense, if they're wanting to book a hotel locally driving back the next day, we're losing income as a city from an occupancy tax if they are buying hotel rooms in other cities. Additionally, business owners and restaurants are losing potential income if we can't make investments for our walkable downtown for those events by making more of the area an attractive and desirable place for working, living professionals, and family. So as the council and community stakeholders continue discussions for a downtown refresh, we would like to hopefully be a case study and proof of a concept that we, as a city, can move forward with economic development, community investment, and historic presentation working hand in hand. Individuals on this council and formal council members in previous terms have told us that the Sorgh is the key or fulcrum to revitalization downtown, and we wholeheartedly agree. We wouldn't be speaking here tonight or working and volunteering week after week in our spare time between jobs and raising children to help improve this little corner of our community. All of our boarder volunteers are from Middletown or have a connection to this community, so we are heavily invested in seeing our city's success. We feel like we've built a lot of goodwill in the community and try to be reasonable stewards. Many of our families were brought here because of this history as a steel and manufacturing town. In that sense, we'd like to pay homage to these roots and close our presentation with some words attributed to Armco Steel founder George M. Verity. "Spirit is the thing which grips the hearts of men and gives them power and extraordinary accomplishment. When working for a worthy purpose, Armco's spirit is a comprehensive vital force which finds expression in the practical application of policies built on a platform of Christian principles in which selfish purpose has no place. Armco's spirit combines in proper proportion a spirit of fairness, a square deal always, both in theory and practice, a bored view of every problem, cutting off all narrowness and littleness, a spirit of unselfishness, of loyalty, of courtesy to, and considering for other fellow. Armco's spirit is, in fact, simply an explication of higher standards of real American citizenship." While the names and places of companies' owners changes, we still believe that the best folks in the community use these guiding principles when serving others. We've certainly had the fortune of encountering them while working on the revitalization efforts at the Sorgh. We'd like to thank especially Chuck, Denise, Ken, Jeff, and Bob, and all the past volunteers and present at the Sorgh who have made similar sacrifices to keep the dream alive, our season sponsors, as well as anyone who has ever come to a concert over the years or stood in our corner to advocate on our behalf. This landmark belongs to the community, and we continue to do our best, one step at a time. Thank you. Sorry. I read it like twice at home and cried both times.
Thank you so much. That was lovely and informative. Thank you.
Sorry.
Do you have any comments from council?
All stars, so you can take a breath. Thank you so much for all you've done. And she mentioned something, and I want everyone to kind of let this sink in. So when they took this building over, the previous owner, will be nice, decided to pour concrete down all the toilets. So that means from jump, they had to do a complete new plumbing system.
Every piece of plumbing, yeah.
That's awesome, isn't it? So, but this is what I've said before about the fabric of Middletown, the way we approached the Middletown Arts Center. This is an active historical building, okay? This has the three things that we should be thinking about. It's historical, it's 19th century, so it's old, it's the arts, which we want all generations to embrace that, and the shows are just, I mean, it is a variety of shows. And then it's what citizens want. I appreciate I had a comment from a citizen who said, "You know, I invest, my family invests in our home, in that we have a large family, but when we want to go see a show, we go to the Sorgh." And this is the perfect part about it. It's just the right size. Because some people, my generation, other older generation, maybe they don't want to be around 1,000 people or 2,000 people, and that's okay at other venues. But when you go to the Sorgh, it's a couple hundred people. And it's nice that you have the ability to see shows. I mean, Here Comes the Mummies were hilarious, the Red Hot Chili Peppers was great. And it's just when you see people smiling, and then the movies, and then the crafts you can do before the movies. And one group, the presentation was fine, but one group that I do remember, and I think it was two years ago, Jennifer, that they, on Martin Luther King Day, they showed Selma.
We did, yeah.
Which I thought, it just shows the fabric, that you care about everybody. And then you also mentioned, and sometimes you wonder why you don't ask questions of your... And I'm showing my Middletown, my mamaw, my papaw, that went to the Colonial and the Sorgh. And what she's talking about is the third tier that you have to stand on the stage and look, those are benches, and those are, they had a separate entrance. And that was for people of color and people who weren't technically from here. And I hate it that it existed, but it also reminds us of a history that will never happen again. And I appreciate that, and that's up where the movie projector is and such. And the reason I knew about that area is because when I volunteered during the opera years, we snuck up there to see what was going on. But it is a shame that even in Middletown, Ohio, that that existed, but it's just a lesson of that will never, ever happen again. But as anything that is important to us, again, like I said many meetings ago, you can give one of two things, or both. You can give the sweat equity, meaning you volunteer, you do the work, you paint, you're an usher, or funding. And because of the environment that we're in right now, the Sorgh did lose some of their funding. And what this is under this grant, and I'm assuming that Ashley and your team's already verified that this is a real grant and everything, what they're looking for is, and what she's saying is, she sends these, this $180,000, she sends it up to the state, and the state says, "Yes, you can do all these things, check, 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 check." So then she has to go out and get bids from folks or award them. The work has to be done, it has to be inspected. Once that's done, these folks have to be paid. So they have to do two things. They have to get paid, and then they have to sign a mechanic's waiver. Like, I know about this because I'm an electrician. What that means is that mechanic, be HVAC, electrical, painter, whatever, says, "I got paid, I'm not going to put a mechanic's lien, I got the money that they agreed to give me." She sends that up to the state, the state says, "Okay, you got the lobby ceiling replacement done." Then they send $9,864 back. What they're looking for is that the city be that funding for that, meaning that we're not giving them $375,000, we're not giving them $180,000. We are being their, lack of a better word, line of credit so they can get this, and then the state sends the money back to us. So, there, I gave you plenty of time to breathe.
Yeah, that is correct. And so what brings us here today, as Paul mentioned, we historically always received money from Middletown Community Foundation, and this was the first year that we got zero. And I don't know if you guys know how that works, but there's a group of people that meets with us, goes over the grant, they go back and lobby for us, and then it is put to a vote. The lady who was supposed to lobby for us said, "Your project isn't sexy, it will not be funded." And it was indeed not sexy enough and not funded. So I was left with this choice of, because we're in mid-renovation now, right? So if you come in, there's no lobby ceiling, there's no lights, there's no basement ceiling. We are in mid-renovation with the funding cut. So we could continue our programming for this season, or we could do the work in the building and the building be dark for the season. That's the reality we're facing.
Is there a timeframe this $375 has to be spent?
There is not. It is non-expiring. They would like it if we spent it in a calendar year, but we can contact them and say, and they know because the building is so big and we have a hard time finding folks that will actually even come out and bid on jobs of our size. So they know what we're dealing with, and they do have the ability to push it back.
It's a biennial application?
That is correct.
It's a biennial application.
Oh, sorry.
So it's a biennial application, meaning every two years. So, you know, if we spend this within the two years, we could reapply for another project.
And we actually don't apply for that. Someone at the state level lobbied on our behalf. We, I actually didn't even know we had it until it made it to the newspaper, and I had to contact our person in Columbus and say, "Did we really get this?" And she said, "Yeah, you really got it."
Who was that who lobbied on your behalf?
I have no idea. We are not made aware.
I have a question regarding the parking lot. Who owns the parking lot?
The parking lot on Door 4, so if you pull into the Sorgh parking lot, where our HVAC system is, that is ours. The lot behind us is city, the lot on right and left are also city.
Does it have some horrible potholes?
Yeah, and so we just, we were, so we just had a sump pump installed in the basement because the basement was taking in water every time it rained. When they went to connect the sump pump to the water main, the pipes were 134 years old, and they were terracotta and had collapsed. So every place there's a pothole in that life is a section where the pipe had collapsed. So that has all been replaced, and we can have the parking lot repaved.
So the city?
No, the Sorgh, that's the Sorgh lot.
On this side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but on the other side, near the bank?
That's city.
That's city?
Yes.
And I think we could take some of this pow we have over there on Verity Parkway and fill up those potholes.
I don't...
I think that would be great.
I mean, I wouldn't say no.
I don't know that that would work. It's crushed up gravel they use.
I know you're gonna put them in the potholes, and then you just put some pavement over it.
Scott, help me.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I'm just trying to make use, make use, because coming out the other day, we were driving, and we went down...
Yes, ma'am, you do.
Right, and I thought, "This is awful. Who owns this? Oh, the city."
Sorry.
Okay, so we can fill those potholes and then pave it over. What's wrong with that? That's an easy fix, I would think.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Because we do have the ground-up what, Paul? You said we had?
Ground-up brick and stuff in there.
Right, right. Couldn't that go in the hole and pave over?
I don't think, I don't think that would work. Because it's gotta solidify in that hole, and that brick, ground-up won't. I mean, it's an easy fix with the proper...
Stuff.
Stuff.
Yeah.
You are correct, but not with that stuff.
Okay, then we could still easy-fix it.
Yes, I think so.
Since it's our parking lot and we're using the Sorgh mansion, I think we could make it useful.
So I guess, Alex, the question I would have, would this be, you know, if council chose to go down this path, is it legal for us to do that?
The short answer is that we believe it is. We're still looking into the proper documentation for that, whether that needs to be some sort of memorandum of understanding or other type of, you know, contract, but essentially, we would want to have some sort of agreement.
Because what I'm thinking too is, you know, you were saying, what percentage of people come from outside our zip code?
About 70%.
I mean, so that's, to me, that's a, that's a visitors bureau thing, and we have the hotel tax, hotel bed tax money that, you know, maybe we can use on a periodic basis as you go along, and that'd be, that'd be a fund that we use, and we have in the past, used for projects such as this.
And I can provide you, it's called a ticket buyer report, and as long as they've bought tickets online, we don't have the ability to track at the door, but if you've bought a ticket online, I can tell you where you're from.
At least we're credit cards from.
That's correct.
Right, yeah. I mean, it's an idea, but...
And I'm also in communication with Ashley, which I appreciate gave me the name to the Heritage Foundation, which this year they're focusing on theaters. We're just, the purpose of this is, is that, as Nancy said, they can do shows or they can do repairs. But the thing is, with a building that's over 150 years old, post-Silver War, it's, they have to have both. The repairs have to be done for people to have shows, because no one's going to sit in a movie theater in August and burn up or freeze in January. Not that it's at that level, but it's just...
It has been at that level. At the beginning of this season, we actually had our outside HVAC unit tore down and rebuilt because we froze last winter.
And the other part of it is, and this is why I'm seeing a lot of this stuff in here, people in the past, owners, and this is sometimes what people think. I can put a residential furnace in a, for the hallway of a commercial building, and it works just fine. But you have to remember, that residential furnace is going to work three to five times harder. So if it had a manufacturer's life expectancy of 15 years, in a commercial situation, that they're having shows every, every month, that thing now is down at five years. And then you're rebuilding it or you're replacing it. So everything in this building has to be commercial-rated, and that's what we're seeing here with this, with some of these things. So the purpose of this is, is, one, can we proceed forward? That's why I'm asking council to say, "Yes, please proceed forward," Ashley and Legal, because this is all in phases. Like I said, we are not giving $375,000. I'm glad it doesn't have an expiration date, but this all is going to be done in phases. And then, once something's completed, then they send the proper documentation up to Columbus, Columbus sends a check down, they can put dual names on the check like I used to have to do, or they just send it directly to the city. All they're asking for is help, and I'll just say it, after I'm done doing this, which I appreciate what I've been doing here, if they'll have me, I... which I appreciate what I've been doing here, I, if they'll have me, I, I'm going to make an effort to get more partnerships and donations on even on an annual basis, because this is something, along with the Windermere and the arts, that the folks from, and they stayed, the South Main historical need. You need something for people to come here to see movies, Jaws is going to be awesome, to see shows, and also, Nancy, just talk about that education thing that you're doing or you're attempting to doing.
Yes, so I have an open grant to the Community Foundation for this cycle, it's the education cycle, and I wrote, this is going to sound, this, this dollar amount is going to sound ridiculous, but let me break it down for you. I, I wrote for a $35,000 grant to allow middle, elementary, middle, high school kids to have the ability to come and see the Butler County Philharmonic perform. It's not announced yet, so everybody forget I'm saying this. In this October, they're going to do the 1949 silent film, Phantom of the Opera, and they will be the soundtrack to the film, like we did Nosferatu last year. I wrote this grant that will cover all of the kids being able to come, that will cover busing for the kids to come, that will cover the symphony, we have to pay the symphony, we have to pay for the music rights, and we have to pay for the film rights, and we have to pay for my sound technician to be there. So the Sorg will make zero money off of that event unless somebody buys some popcorn. It is super-important that we continue to expose kids to music and arts. It's not often taught at the school level anymore, it's considered non-essential, not in my world, but in other people's existence it is. And if we don't keep kids engaged, we will have a generation of people who will have no exposure to the arts. Am I going to get the $35,000? I will not get it all. Community Foundation doesn't have that kind of money to give out to that. I'm hoping to get maybe 10, and then the Sorg can come up with a creative way to offset the rest of it. But that is the current grant I'm sitting on. I'll, I'll know by the end of July about that.
So I see this as one of the gems of Middletown, I've used that phrase a lot, and I'm in total support of, of.
Agreed.
Moving forward on this.
I like it as well, I just have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So, when would this start? I have a couple of questions, one for Ms. Zimmerman as well, just to know that if we're financially able to do this, but the first one would be, if this goes through, if we're able to do this, when would the first grant come through, when would we have to start the payments, things like that?
So I can't, we've submitted and have been approved for $180,000 at the state level. In order to move forward with any of the things on that list, we have to have $375,000 of approved work on the state's books. So, it, it really depends on how quick we can get people to come out and give quotes.
Okay, so, it would not be coming back to the city, like, we would just give?
Like tomorrow? No.
No, 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 but.
Like, next week? No.
But does it, so wouldn't, we would have to make sure that we have the 375 in our coffers, show that proof, and then, as it comes in, you would, you would submit that back to the city and we would get reimbursed?
That is correct.
Bit by bit?
Yeah, and so how we historically did it at the Sorg, like, my plan for this season, we were going to do the lobby ceiling replacement, the basement ceiling replacement, and the HVAC. We had enough money in our coffers to cover that, until we lost the grant. So now that money that I had allotted to do that work has now gone into programming. We do have some money sitting in the account for, in, you know, rainy day fund, in case of catastrophic failure, we could cover some expenses. We, the plan was to roll, continue to roll that money, so that $15,000 for the HVAC unit, once we had that check back, it would have gone into something else, it would have gone to the ceiling installation, and then we would have rolled that money back.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Nope.
Some of these are larger budget items, like the downstairs in the commercial building, you see the stone facade, part of that is giving way, letting water come into the commercial building.
Yeah.
Proper. So like, you know, the 70,000 would obviously be a larger capital expense that, you know, we need to fundraise for and work on. And, you know, we want to still work on the storefronts, a lot of rising costs of goods, you know, finding bids for that, and, you know, replacing the facade is a big priority. But having that liquidity in our coffers would really help a lot of partners with that.
Yes, I think this is, easily can be seen as everything's connected, this is definitely investing in Middletown, not just downtown, but all of Middletown. Mrs. Combs, is this something that we can financially do at this time? It's, because it looks like it's for fiscal year '25.
Yes, Sam confirmed that we could do that.
Fantastic, all right. I think we have, I think the majority, everybody is for this, it looks like. Any other comments or questions at this time?
I, I know people won't believe this, but I did see Jaws there in 1974, I know I don't look that old, but, and I will be there July 12th, and I will buy popcorn.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, that was excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to have Mike Stoutberg with Atrium come up and give an update on the CareFlight project.
Mary Slank, members of council, member Count Carter and Lolly, West and Horn, thank you for having me back. I actually performed on the Sorg stage and came down with the first win for Middletown Rocks, and even got to see Mary Slank up there, but I also saw MC Lolly.
I heard you could jump off the stage and land on two feet.
Yeah, well, I saw somebody that couldn't, but that's.
Wow!
But in all seriousness, you know, I wanted to say thank you for thinking about, and actually, let me pause for a second, because I think the Sorg is a, is a real gem of Middletown too, and I know I'm here to talk about CareFlight, but I spent 11 years in Ashland, Kentucky, and I was on the Ashland Community Foundation for years. We owned a similar theater that was to the Sorg, and while I was president of that community foundation, we gave it back to the, to the independent community, to the independent nonprofit. And so, the Paramount is completely renovated, it's a beautiful theater, there's another one in Anderson, Indiana, if you've ever been up there. So there's a lot of opportunity with this, so I, I think supporting is a good idea. But really, I'm here to talk to you about CareFlight. And so the update is, is that we had asked city council to assist us with the funding of this, this is really an extension of first responders, I know in his past experience as fire chief, Councilman Lolly saw a lot of that. It's gone on over 80,000 different, different pickups and different experiences over his years of service. The busiest of all the CareFlight hubs is actually at Atrium, there are three currently, it has four helicopters that are associated with it. One did go down, it went down in our region, it was right on the Butler-Preble County line a few years ago. It was in bad storm timeframe, and it went down in what was considered a hard landing. The reality was, is that some people might say it came down a little harder than that, but thankfully, nobody was severely injured. But that helicopter now needed to be replaced, along with one that was 32 years old. So we were working to save dollars to replace one, now we've got to replace two. So, we're reaching out to you, we're working together with the four foundations that are a part of Premier Health to raise the money needed to replace one of these helicopters, they're $13.5 million. We've given you a fair amount of information, I'm happy to share or answer any additional questions. One of the things you asked me last time was, could this be paid over time? I did go back and looked at a way to do that, I've had a chance to talk to the city manager and to most of you about how that could possibly be done. We do believe that with your support, we will find other support, not just throughout the community, but also with some of the other surrounding municipalities. So, thank you for taking that consideration, and thank you for considering the support of CareFlight. With that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions or comments from council at this time?
Yeah, once, once again, I'm just going to say, it, you know, you may look at this and think that this is an expensive proposition, but I'm going to, I'm going to tell you that, you know, some things we do for the city of Middletown, we do for public good, and this is one of them. I, I can tell you not to sensationalize it, but I've been on a number of scenes across this city where our firefighter and paramedics have sustained people's lives until CareFlight got on the scene, and then further sustained those people's lives. So, to me, in this situation, it's a no-brainer, no, no amount of money is too expensive to save citizens of Middletown's life, and, and I can tell you that this, this, this has, you know, whether it's a person involved in a car wreck at Roosevelt in Jackson Lane with their legs up into the engine compartment, or the dash of the car, or an industrial accident out at Armco or Cleveland Cliffs, or, I've just seen too many times CareFlight get on the scene and sustain people's lives. And I, I just think this is, this is something we, we really need to do.
I appreciate that, and, you know, one thing I can share is that I can guarantee that everybody, not on council, but also in this room, whether you realize it or not, have known somebody that's been cared for by CareFlight. And lives have been saved, life has been extended, it's an important part of what we do, it's not something that we make money on, but it's an important part of the fabric of our first responders, and we're proud to be a part of it, and we thank you for your consideration and, and support. So thank you again.
So, I will say, what council received was a payment plan over five years, just, just to be transparent.
Yeah, I'm.
With a payment of $50,000 by the end of year 2025, with the remaining four years, $100,000 annually. So, I did talk to Samantha Zimmerman, the finance director, and the Civic Development Fund, Fund 249, is designated for the charitable contributions that we've done this year, and there is approximately $425,000 remaining, and the CareFlight funding request has been incorporated into the financial plan, and we're in a position to accommodate it. If we account for that, we anticipate having about $150,000 remaining for future budget years, just for council's consideration.
And thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ashley, I mean, I, I fully support this.
Right.
Yeah. I, I think it's, I think it's, I mean, obvious, for obvious reasons, but also to help urge other municipalities to say, hey, you know, you know, mishaps happen, and so the, the timeframe on these, you know, on the new birds has been moved up, so I, I think it's, I think it's, you know, a big priority. I mean, all of us can sit up here and say, oh, you know, this, you know, we haven't needed it, or whatever, you never know. You need it two hours from now when we leave here, or maybe it's three hours, depending on how, how wordy Paul gets over there.
I don't know if you saw this yesterday, but on, it was actually on northbound 75, but a big log truck fell over off the side of the highway on 75, and it's a blessing that it was in the slow lane, because if it had been in the other lanes, it would have crushed some of the cars, and those are exactly the kind of places where CareFlight lands, as well as transporting patients who need some additional care. But again, thank you.
You're welcome.
I agree. I've had two family members CareFlight-ed, I had, my brother was CareFlight-ed years ago, but, and he's dead now, but just recently, last month, my nephew had a motorcycle accident, and, thank God he had his helmet on, but he was CareFlight-ed because he couldn't move. So, I, I agree, this is something we do need, yes.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any further comments? All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Next, I'd like to have Luis Rodriguez with Community and Economic Development give the Downtown Refresh update.
Thank you, council, thank you, mayor, and thank you, city management, here to present the Downtown Refresh update. So the importance of community engagement is where this all starts. This effort is an effort to engage the community further in the development of the RFP process for the Downtown Refresh. We've held a number of different information sessions, working groups, et cetera, but the importance of community engagement is really, just the definition really, is the process by which local governments actively involve residents, organizations, and stakeholders in the decision-making and planning process. And it ensures that whatever decisions are made reflect the public's needs, priorities, but it also builds trust and improves outcomes, and that's what we're trying to do here. Feedback fosters transparency, accountability, and it builds for a more strong and inclusive community. So the first thing that we did was we held an online survey for the Downtown Refresh, it was also offered in paper format as well, for those who weren't willing or did not have access to the internet. That was held from February 7th through March, through March 7th of 2025, so it was a 30-day window. There were 289 responses online, one handwritten submission, it was published on our city website and various social media platforms, and the why behind it is to engage the public and use that data to better inform what would be the themes or themes of the town hall meeting that would then occur later on 3/11. So the results were then aggregated, summarized, and then comes the six, the, sorry, the six survey questions that we asked. So, what amenities should be provided in downtown? We asked that resident specify, give them some broad categories. What types of goods and services? Do you typically go outside of downtown Middletown for? And, please look at this slash these locations for inspiration, that being an open-ended question where folks could answer, where do they see inspiration for the downtown? And there was a collage that was made of all those locations, so we could visually represent that at the town hall. And in what ways do we believe that the, that do you believe that the development of downtown Middletown would benefit the city of Middletown? Any additional thoughts and ideas being an open-ended question, and then contact information, which was optional. So the town hall meeting, it occurred on March 11th, 2025, we held two sessions, one at 5:00 PM and one at 6:00, here in the council chambers. Approximately 50 members of the community attended, and we engaged the public in an open forum, we listened, utilized, gathered feedback, and created this new draft RFQ for the Downtown Refresh based on all that. We gave a presentation that kind of laid the groundwork, showing the past, present, and future of Middletown, what the previous RFQ was, what its shortcomings were, and survey findings from the previous online and written surveys. We had a good discussion, it was facilitated by a third party, Miami University, and staff was in attendance. So what were, so a detailed overview of the online survey being presented gathered four focus areas that we identified in that, downtown activation, execution and leadership, community support, education and talent retention. So then we held what was called a working group meeting, that was our first session, which occurred on June 12th, from 12:00 PM to 1:30. It was at the Learning Lab on the fourth floor of the city building and the school offices. We had 40 sign-ups with 23 members of the public and eight city staff in attendance. We continued public engagement for the new draft RFQ. We had an overview of the original RFQ from '22, what challenges we faced by both the previous developer and the city, and we had a Q&amp;A that was also facilitated by Miami University, as well as city staff. There were breakout groups that addressed these four focus areas, there were whiteboards, sticky notes, and so on, which were then written on, presented, and then staff gathered all this input, the meeting was recorded, and then we came back to them for our second working session. So here's what came of the first working session. Many thought the scope of the RFQ should be expanded to include all of the downtown, rather than a few selected properties. Many were frustrated about the condition overall of downtown, city-owned and privately-owned vacant properties, concerns about safety, and as well as beautification. The opportunities that came out of this were, many thought the RFQ could better highlight the great or better parts of downtown, many felt that downtown has a lot of potential, and we're ready for city staff and citizens to work together to address these problems, downtown businesses, public art, historic buildings, and districts. And so, in the second working group, that was held on the 26th of June, from 12:00 PM to 1:30, same place at the Learning Lab, we had approximately 20 members of the public and eight city staff members, we had a continued discussion and furthered the RFQ drafting process, we did what was a page turn of the draft RFQ. The edits to the draft RFQ were presented, and it was also facilitated by Miami University, more input was gathered, and it has since been incorporated into this new draft RFQ. Challenges that were faced, that we're facing, many believed the RFQ could be more specific with certain aspects, such as examples of successful projects in the downtown, and less specific in other ways, such as lengthy historical context. City staff and attendees considered pushing back deadlines to ensure enough time for edits, appropriate council approvals, and finishing touches. And many appreciated the edits that city staff had made, including broadening the scope of the project, but more specifically, instructions for development and being mindful of historic districts and properties. And attendees offered very valuable feedback, rewording, and suggestions for the RFQ. So, our next steps, which are, could change based on the outcomes of this meeting, incorporate the most recent public feedback, which already has been incorporated into the RFQ draft, review the new edits internally and finalize the new RFQ, post the new RFQ for a 30-day period allowing for responses, have city staff review responses after the window closes, interview top candidates, select developers based on responses and staff review, and present proposals to the working group to gain further feedback in the informing the development. informing the development agreements, and finalizing the development agreement or agreements. And the reason I say that is because one thing that came out of the working groups was not to limit it to one developer, whereas maybe you get a proposal for a certain building or certain buildings, or maybe a block. And if that's the case, and it makes sense, then maybe we could approach it in that way, where we have different developers approach different areas of downtown or different buildings. And then continue the engagement process. So, thank you. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Other questions from council?
No, I agree with that last point. You can't expect a developer, you know, developer to come in and either bid all or bid none. That's not how these historic buildings work. So, no, I mean, sounds good.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I want to say also that I'm just very grateful. The mediator who was there from Miami University said that this was something to be copied in other places. This is something he has never really seen, this kind of engagement and this kind of activity. And he really loved it. He hopes other jurisdictions do the same kind of work that our city staff is doing with our community. Just wanted to congratulate all of you on that. And also, just to really let the attendees know that even during the lunch hour, you know, people, twenty-three, twenty people come to these meetings, taking off time from work, you know, not going on those vacations so they can be here. It just shows that level of commitment that the community has. I'm very grateful. So, thank you for all of the work that you've been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite down Deputy Chief Morgan to present the upgrades to the Middletown police firing range.
Counsel, Madam Mayor, one of the goals when I became police chief is to make the Middletown Police Department one of the premier law enforcement agencies in the state of Ohio. To achieve this goal, we have been sending our employees to some of the best training around. As a result of this, sending our employees out to the best training around, they have now become the trainers. So, a lot of our employees are now trained instructors to train other law enforcement agencies on the specialties that they certify in. With that being said, we have an asset here in the city of Middletown and the police department and our gun range. It has been underutilized and it's underdeveloped. Deputy Chief Morgan, prior to him being promoted, was the SWAT team operator and is our lead tactical and trainer here at the police department. So much so that he travels clear across the state of Ohio to train other law enforcement agencies and law enforcement officers in those tactical scenarios. So, he came up with ideal, the ideal and the plan to upgrade our range to get it to where it becomes profitable to the city of Middletown and to the Middletown Police Department. So, I'll turn it over to him and let him go through his slides.
I want to thank Chief, our city manager, council, and the mayor for giving us opportunity to come out and talk to you guys. Like Chief said, one of the things that I've kind of prided myself on in the last fifteen years is training. Been here for nineteen, but I've been a trainer in some capacity for the police department since my third year on the job here. So, I take it very serious. We are very fortunate here, like Chief told you. I am part of the RED team, which is readiness, education, development for the Ohio Tactical Association, which is the lead tactical association in the state of Ohio. And in that capacity, I get to go across the entire state training from all the way down in Summit County, all the way to Cleveland, all over the place. And when I tell you we have some of the best officers here, I'm not just saying it because I work here. We truly do. Some of the places I go to, I'm genuinely concerned for the residents of those communities. So, with that being said, we have taken steps here to try to put our officers in better situations where they can, you know, keep up with that training and provide better service for the community here in the state of, or, sorry, in the city of Middletown. We've even, for those of you who don't know, we have now, we are now a actual basic firearms certified basic firearms academy through OPADA here in the city of Middletown. We actually just finished our first class with a couple of our correctional officers. In that capacity, we're allowed to train correctional officers, bay lifts. I think we can do fire marshals and as well as probation officers and SWAT medics. We can do that training here. When OPADA came and checked our range, they said, well, you know, if you guys had a classroom down here, it could accommodate a better, more people. They could put it posted on their website. And in doing so, when we charge, you know, anywhere, the average charge is like a thousand dollars per student. We can have a class from anywhere from five up to twenty-five students. All of that revenue comes back to the city of Middletown when we do that. In addition to that, we have a lot of other agencies that use our range: Monroe, Trenton, Parks Department, Oxford, Fairfield Township, all these other places that use our range. We currently don't charge them to use our range, but in doing this, improvements, you know, that's something we can look at as well. So, right now, I want to talk, the purpose of making upgrades, like I said, is to have a classroom down there and just improve the range in itself. It's twenty-five acres down there that is mostly underutilized. So, hopefully, if we could make it more conducive to training, we can bring more people in to use it. Currently, this is the layout. I'm not sure if this works or not. No, not going to try that. Though, on the left side is our main, main range. The right side is our secondary range. Then that grassy area is kind of like our steel range. You'll see a building here. This is the entrance to it. It's just a gravel road that's definitely needs some fixes, some pretty deep potholes and shovel to get down there. But this is the entrance, just a regular gate with a padlock. The little building on your right there, as you enter, is empty right now. It's just an old barn that we used to have for storage, but it's pretty much collapsing, so we don't use it anymore for storage or anything. And this is that steel range I was telling you about on the right side there. On the left is just a little storage building that we use just for targets and little things that we can keep down there and kind of overwatch both sides of the range. But that also is, was built by some students at Butler Tech several years ago and has some issues right now with the structure. A little closer look. This is our main range that we use here. Needs repaved on the right side. And the left side is the second range that also, if we could pave that out, that would help with some of the brass issues and some of the different setups we can do to set up scenarios and things of that nature for training. Goes to our sniper range. On the left side is kind of where we want to build a building up there, hope for about thirty students. On the right side is the drive over to a sniper range, one of the drop, big kicks for Middletown's range, that our range goes back to, up to three hundred yards. If it goes all the way back to, next one is in Hamilton. They have a sniper range that only goes out to a hundred yards. So, right now, there's no electricity down there. There's no structure classroom for training, no restrooms. We have a porta potty down there that people can use when we have female officers training down there. Obviously, that makes it struggle for them. Very limited parking. There's no actual parking area. We just kind of use the grass area. Lack of security, you know, when I've been, we've only had two, so far, two incidents where people have broken in down there. But there's really no way to put security cameras up or alarms or anything because there's no electricity, the inadequate signage and lighting. So, we're very limited on some of the training we can do as far as like low light settings and things of that nature. The proposed upgrades is we can run electricity from cribs. We've already gotten with Duke. We put an electric fence up there with a sliding gate, barbed wire, have a keypad on it so that people can key in and out. About a sixty-by-forty training building with two restrooms. We want to put just a, just a basic refrigerator and sink and microwave. So, if we are training down there, people don't have to leave. They just want to bring their lunch with them. Covered area they can sit in outside of the building, water and septic, obviously, repave that road, excavate and level the main two ranges, some improved lighting, target system, cover prep area. So, when people come down to the range from the building, they'll have somewhere to set their ammo and gear and stuff and not have to walk all the way back up to the building to come down to the range. And then simulation, shoot house. Simulation is kind of like the, what we use for training. It's just do force-on-force training to get officers prepared for situations in the street. It's kind of just a conceptual layout of how we like it to look, where the building is, put some parking spaces up there, the prep area, picnic area, the heavy vehicle parking. As you know, we have a MRAP, which is our armored vehicle for our SWAT team. We'll need something a little bit heavier for parking down there when the SWAT team goes down there to train. Electricity, single-phase direct buried cable to a pole down from, from cribs down to overhead transformer down by where we want to put the building at. Duke gave us an estimated cost of twenty-eight thousand dollars. City will be only be responsible forty percent of that cost. We spoke to our superintendent over at the Public Works. He has a number of employees that need training in digging trenches, which is something else we'll be responsible for. So, we'd use that as an opportunity for them to save us some money. Perimeter security fence, put a fence down there with a sliding gate, like I said, with keypad for entry. We got estimated costs. I just went with the same company that used, does our impound lot, yes. See the estimated costs there. Training building, got with a local builder, commercial builder in town. Just to give, I want to give council and city manager some true cost, what, you know, that would look like. Obviously, I know it should be moved forward. We have to put it out to bid, but I wanted to at least give you guys some real numbers to consider. So, be forty-by-sixty building, spherical manufacturing, block, sidewalls, metal above, standing seam, roof floating, four-inch insulation sidewalls and six-inch roof insulation, gutters, downspouts, concrete floor and footers, and interior finishing for the classroom and the restrooms and kitchenette, a storage room and a small office for our range officers to keep documentation. The plumbing and electric HVAC, AV equipment, just so when we hold classes down there, we can have a screen and then refrigerator and microwave. Tables and chairs, classroom sessions, this is the estimate cost with all the interior build-out and labor. Obviously, with prevailing costs right now, prevailing wage costs right now, it's a government contract. You guys all understand that. As far as the range itself, the parking lot for the training building, parking lot on the sniper range, paving both sides of the range, concrete pad for the MRAP, the concrete pad for the prep areas and for the sniper range prep areas, and then paving the road from cribs down to the, down into the range. And this is the total for the excavation, hauling, site prep, all the asphalt, concrete, and labor and everything all included there. Then, water well and mound system installation. We've got a total estimate there. Obviously, you get, it would have been a lot more expensive, a couple hundred thousand if we would have tried to run a line off from all the way to cribs, that's the nearest that we'd be able to do that. So, we thought that it'd be more economical to go with the water well and mound system for sanitation. Then lighting for each range, video surveillance, and then the SIM house that I was telling you about that we can kind of configure the walls to change up different scenarios to train our officers for different entry and building clearance. So, this is the total project, just the estimate, obviously, that can vary, one way or another, depending on bids. Benefits, obviously, is enhanced training capabilities, safer working environments. With better trained officers, we're increasing community trust. Then a potential revenue, as I said, with the holding of classes. We're also saving money because if we can host classes from the OTOA, ADAC Tactical, and some of the other organizations that we send our officers to, if we can host the training, normally, they will give us a free spot in the class. So, we wouldn't have to pay an officer to pay for their hotel and travel and per diem, or paying for the class itself, which they ranging from six hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars, depending on what the class is. So, there's some savings there.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's very educational. Any questions or comments from council at this time?
First of all, I appreciate the presentation. And training is what makes a great agency. It just does. And it's, you're blessed with some land here, and to have that sniper range at, what'd you say, three hundred yards?
Three hundred yards.
You have to have that because it gives the ability for those officers to be able to take that training as a covered building there so they can set up their gear and everything. It's a situation where it's like, yes, that's a lot of money, but it's, it's something where a trained officer is going to think before he makes that life-altering decision, or if he's been told that, you know, you got a green light and you got to go. And you don't want to make that mistake. Because when I took my training, civilian training, it's basically you're responsible for every bullet that comes out, and you don't want something to happen where it diverts. So, the training is paramount. And I liked also the shoot house. It's, I had a friend of mine who actually, he was a Orange County SWAT Team sheriff. And I asked him the question, because he, that's in California. So, he's gone into a lot of bad houses. And because of their constant training, constant training, and then also before they go into the, to serve the warrant, I asked him, I said, what's the worst, where's the worst position? First guy in or second? He said, and I thought it would be first. And he's like, no, it's actually second, because the first guy they don't really see. It's the second guy. But because that training where everyone is clustered together and you have the shields up and everything else, to me, it's paramount that we continue to have training. And if we can sell this to other agencies, we have so many agencies in our area, be it state, be it county, be it federal. And if we have this premier place with this kind of distances, I belong to the Middletown Sportsman Club. So, I'll, and I like playing with my rifle, we'll call it a sniper rifle, but my rifle, I'd be able to shoot two hundred, four hundred yards away. Obviously, I got to walk all the way back and forth with targets. But it's just, it's refreshing to see that one that we have the ability to do this. Unfortunately, you know, we have to invest in it. But I would just say that, you know, training, training is what makes agencies great all the way around for our community. And I think we have a great agency here with the city of Middletown. And I definitely, I appreciate all this, but to have the land, because like the city of Cincinnati, their shooting range is just a range. When you drive through Glendale, you're kind of like, okay, what's going on? So, it's good we have this outside of the city limits area or out in the country area. And to have this, some of these structures built, because these guys have to carry all their gear in, correct, when they're, when they're doing training. They're training just like they're going out into serving a warrant or dealing with an incident. So, they have to have a place to put all this stuff. And portlets are great too. You have to use one in August. So...
We actually, we're hosting two, three OTOA, a basic sniper and advanced sniper and a sniper team there this year. Last year, we're hosting an advanced SWAT school. So, we do this a lot more with the facilitation. It's always a challenge, as you said, when you have a porta potty on there for twenty-four guys.
Well, yeah, and that's what I mean. This, this is for, this is why you can charge what you can charge, because this is a city, a county, a state, a federal agency. This is not for the public, darn it. But that's why we have the Middletown Sportsman Club. So, that's why, you know, upgrading this and getting electricity, getting you into the twenty-first century would probably be awesome. But obviously, we have a number here that we have to do. But I've got to appreciate, one, the importance that this agency sees with training, and two, that, you know, you're trying to make this better and also turn this into a revenue generator for us.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council?
Just a couple of quick things. For one, I mean, seeing the ask for this, it's kind of wild to me because, you know, my background in the military was VBSS, whether it be drug ops or, you know, Northern Arabian Gulf, right? We'd board ships. And we had these kind of facilities that are at its disposal whenever we wanted to use them. And then... Um, and then obviously shipboard stuff, we would, I mean, we had unlimited use almost of other vessels. So it's, it's just kind of wild to me that, um, a lot of cities don't have facilities like this. I mean, who, where, where would be the closest one that could compare to something like this?
Uh, maybe Hamilton, uh, they have a, the range is, it's kind of made in level. They have a classroom there with, actually with an indoor range, uh, for inclement weather. Um, and then like I said, they have the sniper range that goes out to about a hundred yards.
Yeah. I, I mean, here's the thing, it's, yeah, it's, it's a lot of money, but at the same time I can see not only the, the short-term strategy, but long-term, you know? I mean, it, it's not only, we wouldn't have to send officers away for training and save on per diem and, and hotel, but also, you know, they, they can stay here, right? They, they can stay local. So if there were anything, you know, emergency or whatever, I think potentially be, be here. Um, uh, so I guess my ask is of, you know, Ashley and, and city staff, it are, you know, looking at this and it, it's kind of hard to go off of, you know, these estimates because then you put the, the RFP out there and you get, I mean, is, uh, for some of the parks, some of the estimates we had were insane and some were reasonable. But so for this particular project, um, i- in, in an ideal world, how, how would you fund this?
So I talked to Sam and there's a couple of ways we can look at this if council wishes to move forward with it. So we could look at it in phases for the 2026 budget, or we do have a mid-year supplemental appropriation that finance is comfortable with three million. However, there were other projects sent out to council for consideration, so there's just not three million without other, lots of other projects asking for that.
Right.
So, um, those are the two things that we're looking at.
Okay, so, uh, I, okay, good call on that. Um, I, I would imagine this might be a couple of different RFPs. So you'd have maybe, or maybe not RFPs, but stages to it, right? You want to get power, water, um, septic, all that stuff in there. I imagine there, there might be a couple of different ones down the road for structures, concrete, stuff like that. Um, I mean, I'm amenable to any way staff recommends to approach this, but I just want to make sure that we had at least initially, I know there's some projects, you know, coming down, but, um, I, I mean, I, I think this is a priority. And the other thing is that the life, the shelf life on this type of range is many, many decades, many, many decades. So over the course of those decades, if, if you can get, you know, officers out there that, and it's not, and, and I'm not going to say that they're, they're, they're better trained, it's just training, training is, is only as good as, as often as you do it, you know? The muscle memory, all that stuff when it, when it comes to this stuff. So if it can save an officer's life or it, it can save a civilian's life, you know, it, 1.7 million, is that, is that worth it? That, that's what, that's the way I look at it, you know? And, and I just, I, I think it's, it's wild that, um, you know, we had these facilities at our disposal almost 24/7 in the military. So be, for the same reasons, right? Except for we were dealing with foreign threats. So it's like, these are our children, these are our family members, our neighbors and stuff here in the communities and other, other agencies that come here to town to, to train, you know? I, I think it should be the same priority. Would it be nice if, if, uh, you know, the county or, or state chipped in? Sure, but we could say that about any project, but, um, I, I think it's, it's well worth the investment, not only for, you know, local law enforcement, but, but also, you know, for other agencies that, you know, like Chief Nelson said, I mean, he's setting this agency up to be a premier, um, you know, a premier agency that, that can help train other, other cities and townships and counties. So I, I think it's well worth it, you know, I'll look for, you know, Ashley and Sam, what, whatever you, you guys recommend for different types of funding streams. Um, but I think it's something we should, we should very seriously consider. I mean, I'm for it, so.
I'm not. I, I, I think we have so many projects out there right now and I'd like to see some projects completed other than the fire stations. We got the community center, we may need to add more money. We got parks, we got the Renaissance, we got the Y. We're spending money like it's our personal money and this is the city's money. This money belongs to the people and to spend that much money on a firing range, I say no. I'm sorry. I also have a paper here where we're asking for money for something else. We need to complete some things. What have we completed other than fire stations? Tell me, what else have we completed?
We've completed a lot of things.
Like what?
I mean, we could go down that path. We've completed a lot of projects in this city.
What have we completed?
Parks, parks wise, we got, we got Sherman done.
Douglas has no water down there for their children.
But, you know, but.
They have some sprinkles that.
But, I mean, if we, if we want to, if we want to go down this route, we can.
I do, I do.
Because Douglas, Douglas, I advocated to get the splash pad prioritized by the Parks Board and, and, and get that moving. Cause that wa, that was something that was going to be down the road and I said, no, 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 we have the money here, let's prioritize.
No, Paul started that. Paul said, he put up some sprinklers for the water and he said, we will fix the problem. We've had four, we have, we have, uh, a groundwater that has not worked in four years down at Douglas, four years. No waters came up out of the ground for the children to play in. I would like to say, no, that's just my vote.
Well, my vote, yes. Because an officer is only, is, is only as effective and safe as often as they train and as, as much as they train. I'm telling you, 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 you can't, you can't expect, you can't expect law enforcement to have to travel every time they need to receive training or go to training or, or administer training. I, I mean.
Where's the firing range now?
Down behind, uh, the path that goes back behind cribs.
Okay. So we have a firing range. What's the problem?
I mean, I, maybe you didn't pay attention to, to, to the logistics of it.
I did.
Okay, well then it's clear what the problems are. But you can't constantly come up here and say, we're not helping other parts of the city, when I have advocated for other parts of the city, we've invested millions of dollars into the community center. I've advocated for the splash pad down there. I've advocated to get all these parks and things like that.
I said completion. I said completion.
So you're, so you're looking at, you're, you're looking at projects that are nearing completion or have been completed.
I don't want to debate this with you. I've had, I'm, I'm speaking.
You brought it up, not me.
Although at this time, that's, I agree. I, I think we should come back, but thank you, thank you so much for all the input. But if we can come back to the, this, this conversation, um, did, Mr. Lally, did you want to say anything?
Is it possible for sometime here in the future, you guys to give us maybe a little bit more of a refined idea of what the revenue generation might look like a little bit on an annual basis? I, I totally support this. You, you know, I support public safety. Um, but I, I think something that will, will be, maybe be a little bit more enticing for us is if we do see a significant revenue generation income from this, I think that might make it a more palatable.
And that's also what some of my questions are. Um, I would love to, to hear, because you mentioned, like, some of your classes could draw $1,000 per student and you could have anywhere from five to 25 students. That's considerable. And, um, so I'm curious, you know, where do those funds go? How long are those classes? But I'm also curious, um, and again, like Mr. Lally said, we, you'd have to kind of look at this and get some numbers in your head, as you mentioned earlier as well. Um, you mentioned other municipalities jurisdictions, Monroe, Trenton, Oxford, Fairfield. They're not paying right now. Would, would they be amenable to paying in the future? Is that something that's been discussed?
Yes, we had a meeting with, uh, Monroe and Fairfield Township, um, just letting know that the idea, because those, those two agents are probably the ones that use it the most throughout the year.
Monroe and Fairfield?
Fairfield Township.
Fairfield Township, thank you.
Yes. Uh, and we, you know, pitched the idea of what we're wanting to do down there and, you know, explained that there would probably be some type of membership fee or something. We didn't really discuss what that fee would be because we didn't know how, where this would go at the time, but, um, they were very open to that. Um, and they also agreed that, you know, they'd like to do more of the training down there, but the limited, uh, not having the classroom, not having facilities to use the restroom, things like that, um, makes it difficult to do so, so.
And a lot of things have always been done on a quid pro quo basis, like forever. We use Trenton's drone because we did not have a drone and they did not charge us. So, you know, but I, I, I think this is an opportunity where this is going to be a, a state of the art, uh, facility if we can get there and we got the opportunity for, eventually for it to pay for itself.
And that's also kind of where I'm at. I'd like to learn more, hear, hear some more about the numbers, what the revenue potentially could be, um, and also see where the interest lies as well. And also I'm interested in that phased approach. I think the money for this year, that three million that we're talking about, I, I feel like that's already well taken, like that's already done for this year with the kinds of projects that we're looking at. Um, but I would be interested in learning, like Mr. West had also said, what, what kind of approach we could take with payment for this, if it were to happen. Um, thank you, I'm very interested, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Horn?
So my thought on this, one, I'm for it. Um, I guess since they want you to come back and give some numbers, kind of give, and I think you already did it, but just make it, maybe in phases, the, the, the must-have, electricity, water, the roads, but also the things that you think that's going to be utilized with your officer's training and then what other agencies are going to use for training. What I'm thinking is, like the shoot house, that'd be great, but that, is that a have to or is that a want? So maybe that's, maybe phase one is this is the stuff that we need just to get us into the 21st century and then, but, but the training, the training room is where you can say, okay, this is, this is what we're, this is the simulation, this is the procedures that we need to do, and then you go out in the range and you, you, you execute it. So don't, you know, don't think building, because that's, that's, that's the biggest number out of all of them. If that's, that's the second thing after getting yourself into this century being water and electricity and septic and road, then make that your phase two. Uh, maybe that'll help everyone understand what, what, where, where you're trying to get with that. Uh, again, because if the funding is there, um, I understand and I appreciate what Ms. Carter's saying, because we do, we have a lot of, a lot of things going on here. We have a, we finally got our, our crane farm cleared up, you know, we, we actually have flat land over there. Oh, come on, that's funny. Uh, so, and there's going to be a park and the community center is, from what I'm seeing, and this is me driving by, uh, because I don't go in because I'm, I don't do that. Um, it looks like the construction's looking very well on that. Yes, we need to get the splash pads fixed and everything else, but again, if you look at, when we had the kids here that did the coloring, wasn't one thing that they all said, if they had a superpower to make the city safe, well, they don't have the superpower. We have our super men here that do that for us. Training, I'm just telling you, when, when it comes to both, all first responders, training is the key. That is, that's, that's, that's savings of a life, that is saving of other lives and we need to have this, uh, training facility because this is, this is where our men and women learn how to make, um, informed decisions when it's seconds of, of time. So anyways, maybe that'll help all involved, uh, that if it, next time you bring the numbers back to us. But I'm just going to tell you right now from this thing, there is no ROI that this is going to be paid back in, in a reasonable time. Okay, uh, let's, let's got to be real here and what I mean, what I mean by ROI is return on investment. Anytime you're trying to do an investment like on this, the good ROI would be five, maybe seven years, 10 max. That's not going to happen. But if you can just show, these are the agencies that use us regularly and they're what, this is what they're agreeing to, then we can at least say, all right, this will maybe pay this, this bill or that bill, but, you know, don't, don't, don't kill yourself on the ROI because there is no, there is no universe that at one point, whatever is going to be paid back in any period of time because, because this will still depreciate. So in 10, 15 years, things will have to be repaired because everything, you know, when you're using it, it does get wear and wore out.
Right.
So this, my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Any other comments or questions from council at this time?
So I just wanted to add that I'll be sending out tomorrow to council that mid-year supplemental, that three million, just the projects that I had sent out a while back, but I'm going to add this one just so you can see all the projects out there. And I know when Deputy Chief Morgan presented this to me, he did have them phased approach. So they do already have that information kind of put together, so, um, we'll get that to council.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. And, uh, does that end the city managers?
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Ms. Combs. Uh, the next item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. While the consent agenda is generally for consensus items, do any council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening and move it to the motion agenda? Hearing none, we will continue. Mrs. Skank, please present this consent agenda.
Your consideration this evening, we have the, uh, to confirm the conditional appointment of Callie Fisher to the position of Community Projects Coordinator in the Community and Economic Development Department Recreation Division, and the conditional appointment of Charles Jones to the position of Maintenance Worker in the Department of Public Works and Utilities Water Maintenance Division, and the appointment of Joshua Butler to the position of HVAC Building Maintenance Technician, and the appointment of Casey Dean to the position of GIS Administrator. To confirm the promotional appointment of Bryce Nartker to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator in the Department of Public Safety Division of Fire, and the promotional appointment of Laura Sherwood to the position of Executive Account Clerk in the Department of Finance Division of Treasury. To receive and file the following board and commission minutes, the Civil Service Commission, April 17th and May 15th, 2025, the Architectural Review Board, April 22nd, 2025, Historic Commission, May 15th, 2025, and the Library Board, May 21st, 2025. To receive and file oaths of office for Tavion Crosby, Brady Huffman, Mackenzie Saunders, and Brian Wright. To accept the resignation of Michael Huff from the Midpoint Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mrs. Skank. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. We will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Yeses have it, the consent agenda is approved. Our next agenda item this evening is the motion agenda. We have four items this evening. Mrs. Skank, please present item A on the motion agenda.
Item A is to receive, file, and adopt the 2026 tax budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Skank. Ms. Combs, the staff report?
I have nothing further to add from the presentation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item A to receive, file, and adopt the City of Middletown 2026 Tax Budget?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Uh, Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yeses have it and the motion passes. Mrs. Skank, please present item B on the motion agenda.
To authorize a contract with Gibbons Planning Group LLC in the matter of $118,600 for the update of the Middletown Development Code.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
Middletown city staff and the planning commission have identified the need to modernize and streamline the current development code, which last saw the full update in 2018. This update will align the code with a 2022 comprehensive plan, destination Middletown, and incorporate relevant zoning practices. The goal is to enhance land use policies and support business-friendly development. The Planning and Zoning Division aims to begin this update in 2025. Five firms submitted proposals through the Request for Proposals process and Gibbons Planning Group LLC was selected for its innovative and hands-on approach when proven, and proven success in similar projects.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item B to authorize a con, contract with Gibbons Planning Group LLC in the amount of $118,600 for the update of the Middletown Development Code?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.[1745.83]
Yeses have it and the motion passes. Mrs. Skank, please present item C on the motion agenda.
To accept a Jobs Ohio Vibrant Communities Program Grant in the amount of $28,250 for planning assistance for the Middletown Community Grocery/Health Clinic Project.
Thank you. Mrs. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
This request the city council to approve and accept $28,250 for planning assistance awarded from Jobs Ohio from the Middletown, for the Middletown Community Grocery and Health Clinic Project. This funding will help redevelop the former Vail Middle School site and allow the City of Middletown to apply for additional Jobs Ohio grants. The city partnered with Jobs Ohio and Ready Cincinnati to assess the Vail site for the grocery store and health clinic. The grant will fund the site planning, market analysis, and identification of potential operators.
Thank you very much, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve item C to accept Jobs Ohio Vibrant Communities Program Grant for the amount of $28,250 for planning assistance for the Middletown Community Grocery/Health Clinic Project? So moved. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Lawley. Is there a second? Second? Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
No.
Mr. West?
No.
Mr. Horn? Mr. Lawley was a yes, Mrs. Carter was no, Mr. West was no.
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes. The yeses have it and the motion passes. Mrs. Skank, please present item D on the motion agenda.
To approve providing four school resource officers to the Middletown City School District for the 2025-26 school year.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
I'm going to have Alex present this.
Mr. Ewing, thank you.
So this is to approve the provision of four school resource officers to the Middletown City School District for the 25-26 school year. The Middletown Division of Police has provided school resource officers, or SROs, to the Middletown School District for several years. For the upcoming 2025-26 school years, four SROs have been requested. The school district will pay 75% of the total employment cost for their SROs as well as additional expenses for training, cell phones, and vehicles. The projected cost to, to Middletown City School District for four officers is $413,988.58. Per Chief Nelson, the elected officials from the FOP have reviewed the new SRO contract and are satisfied with the language and the number of officers assigned to the schools. The school board voted four to one on the revised contract at their meeting. A member voted no because they preferred having five SROs and did not want a reduction to four SROs. Additionally, patrol officers received an 8.8% salary increase effective November 1, 2024, as part of their most recent collective bargaining agreement. This adjustment was not included in the previous SRO contract due to the timing of the agreement. Looking ahead, looking ahead, they are scheduled to receive an additional 4.5% increase on November 1, 2025, during the term of the upcoming SRO contract. And the city would be responsible for 25% of the employment costs during the time when school is not in session for these staff. And that cost totals $140,412.86.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Is there a motion to approve item D to provide, to approve providing four school resource officers to Middletown City School District for the 2025-26 school year? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
So I, I have several issues with this contract. And I discussed them today with, with our legal counsel. And, and I don't want to really reiterate a lot what I discussed with him because we're kind of in agreement that some of the language needs to be further defined. But my main issues are this. What is the plan in going from six SROs to four? How, how does that work? My concern is the school's going to, to reduce their cost. But we're going to have to supplement officers on the street where it's going to take away calls, calls for services with officers on the streets. Because, and, and so I guess that's the one question. What's, what's the plan? How, how are those four officers going to cover what six officers were doing? And are we going to see an increase in, in cars being pulled off the street where they're policing out in the community? That's, that's one of my concern. And then I, I have a barrage of language in this contract that while it might have been language in here from when this was originally done in 2014, I just think it's, we need to, to clean it up. And just as, I'll just give a couple of examples. There's one part that says, while this agreement remains in effect, the SRO shall attend annual training approved by the school district. Well, my opinion is that should say the school district and the chief of police. Because I, I read that as the school district decides what training the officer goes to and only the school district. And while I, I, I get we want to train those officers to handle school problems, I just think there could be some training that the school district says, you're going to go to that training, but the chief of police doesn't think it's necessary. So there should be something built in there where our chief of police has the, the authority to say, no, our guys aren't going to that particular training. There's, there's also some language in here that basically says that the SROs will adhere to the rules, regulations, administrative guidelines, and policies of the school district. Well, what are those? And then something happens and then all of a sudden the school says, well, wait a minute, according to Rule Number 4609-241, you can't do that. Well, you want me to agree with something that, I, to me, that's just too vague. There, there's too much there that, you know, we've seen over the years where that, that could, could be a particular problem. And then I also have a little bit of the issue that if, if where it goes, you have a situation where a student or an employee, the school, school needs arrested. And in this part, the decision to arrest shall be at the sole discretion of the SRO, but will be discussed with the principal. I, I just, I, I have issues with that. If an officer thinks a student or an employee needs arrested, I, I find it difficult that that should have to be discussed with the school principal before that is, that is carried out. Those, those are my primary issues. I, I shared that with the law department. I, my main issue is, is going from six SROs to four and how that works, what, what increased workload is that going to cause on, on the four officers? And Chief Nelson, if you want to address that, that, that'd be great.
So it is a tough balancing act when you go from six down to four. But I think the SROs, when we spoke with them, they're, they're comfortable with handling that workload in the schools that they're assigned to. And again, that, by having those four in those, in those schools, it reduces the workload that the street officers will have to cover as well. When it comes to the training, I know the language may be some tinkered a little bit, but we decide what training they go to. There is an annual training that's stated in the contract that they have to attend to maintain their SRO status. We decide that training. The schools don't decide the training. So it's something that we take care of. And your last question, I had an answer for as well. What was your last one?
Uh, the one on the arrest.
Yes. So there was a lot of language cleaned up from the previous contract as well. We decided, so there was some language there that only stated the schools get to decide whether or not the SRO will make that arrest. And then we had a change to the SRO will make that arrest and then tell the school and the school staff that their arrest has been made. But we determined that arrest, that was made clear in the last contract language.
Okay, I, I get that. I understand that. But what I see here is how it's worded, which is my discussion. If it's, then if, as you say, then it needs changed before we sign off on it is, is my, my concern. And before I vote yes.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah. And in addition, there also needs to be, because the percentages 75 and 25, those are clearly off now if it doesn't include wage increases. So that needs to be tweaked in the contract.
Just to clarify, it does include the wage increases?
It does?
Yes.
Just one more question. Well, my, my comment, it's to echo what Councilman Lawley said. My, my always concern is, is that your officers are in the best conditions that they can be in. And, and this is just from past history of true stories, not made up stories, that if your officer has to make, or she has to make a decision to arrest a student for probably the main thing is assault, which is clearly, and I actually looked it up just so I can speak to it or, you know, be able to understand what's going on. And the state of Ohio, under that ordinance, it's, it doesn't say if you're a child and you assaulted an adult. It's assault. So now I know, we also have to use some common sense. There's a difference between an eight-year-old and a 17-year-old. And that's where, but you, the main thing I want out of this, and I know we're talking contract and language is, is a legal director, we had a good conversation about that. But we just have to make sure that the school understands that you have to make the people around there safe. So if someone's having a, an issue that you have to make that arrest, you're also trying to protect the people around them and not, we need to sit them down and talk to them now. They're under arrest. Now notifying the principal saying, this person's under arrest, we're putting them in the cruiser, we're taking them downtown, their guardian, their parent needs to come down there and we need to issue the citation and get them some help, that's fine. But no more of the, the, the principal or the, whoever the senior director of human resources is, which I think is, I hope that's an actual person, not the superintendent. But you are in control of the situation. Now, the day-to-day stuff, the metal detectors and walking around and just making sure everyone's safe and, and training, okay, that, that can be worked out between you and the schools. But I just want to be very passionate about you make the decision and you, and then you execute that down, you being chief and everyone that works below you, that they, if they feel the necessity to arrest someone, they arrest them.
Yes. And that was in the previous contract, it was worded at such that the schools decided on when that officer were making arrests. And I said, I didn't like that. We, you know, we make that decision and we're going to stand by it. And I'm pretty sure that was a language that was decided upon with the previous law department.
And again, the school needs to understand, that's what, again, training has done. Training tells your officers, this is, this is, this is where we sit them down and talk and this is when we arrest them. So it's not like the officer doesn't know when to make that decision.
So, so I don't know. My suggestion here is that we table this instead of voting on it. And so we can get this language cleaned up. Because I, I'm just not comfortable with, with the language. I understand what you're saying, Chief Nelson, but the problem is, the way it's worded, I'm just uncomfortable with it, especially the one that said, the, the one where it says the school resource officer will adhere to all policy, procedures, rules, and administrative guidelines of the school district. But yet, I mean, that, that's pretty.
Yeah, they could, I mean, they could just make any policy up.
That could mean just about anything.
They, they can make any policy up that would supersede the contract.
Yeah.
So given the ask and given the fact that we do need to review not just what was talked about here, but it sounds like further language as well. To table then, since we have a motion that's on the floor, what's the next call? Just have it, just interrupt?
Well, I think what you can, what you can do is withdraw your motion. And then have, make a motion to table item number D in the motion agenda.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and withdraw the motions for item D in the motion agenda. And is there a motion to table item D in the motion agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to table item D. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter?
What are we voting on?
We are, we have just asked to table this discussion, this vote tonight for, until we can review the language of the SRO contact, contract. So that's the vote right now. Do we want to table it?
Voting to.
Table.
Table, yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Yeses have it and the motion passes. We will table item D. This concludes the motion agenda. And it's almost 9:30. Did we want to take a break?
Please.
All right. So it's 9:26. Let's take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 9:36. Thank you. Thank you. Director, Mr. Alex Ewing, legislation, please.
Item number one, ordinance number O-2025-38. An ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing the purchase of Dell Virtual Environment Hardware from Insight Public Site Incorporated, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Could we correct the screen, please, as well? Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add?
I do not, not from the last meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gink, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankah?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number two, resolution number R-2025-21. A resolution opposing House Bill 335 and urging the Ohio General Assembly to reject legislation that eliminates inside millage and transfers local budgetary authority to county budget commissions, and declaring an emergency.
This report outlines the proposed resolution opposing House Bill 335, currently under consideration by the Ohio General Assembly. The resolution supports local fiscal authority and opposes state legislation that would eliminate unvoted inside millage and transfer budget oversight to unelected county entities. House Bill 335, known as the Property Tax Relief Now Act, proposes to eliminate unvoted inside millages for counties, municipalities, school districts, starting in the 2025 tax year. Empower county budget commissioners to review and modify local government budgets, limit tax levies, and override local official fiscal decisions. Inside millage is a key revenue source for local governments, providing stable funding and essential services in supporting our credit rating. Staff recommends adopting this resolution to formally oppose House Bill 335, which would, which could result in an estimated loss between 1.8 to 2 million in the general fund revenue.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Horn?
I guess I have a question. So is this, this is at the state level, right, up in Columbus, this House bill? So is this like a strongly worded letter from the city of Middletown saying, "We don't like this"? Or does this have any effect on anything?
Ms. Zimmerman, our fairness director, will come to the podium. Thank you.
This is something that OML brought to our attention. This is just a way for us to formalize our opposition to this. I will say that OML released a statement that they did not put this in the budget. It was not approved in the budget. That doesn't mean that it can't come back. I've talked with our bond counsel, and they are keeping a close eye on this as well. So this is just a way for us to show our opposition.
Okay, that's what I'm asking is, because we don't control state stuff, but this is just basically saying, "Middletown doesn't like this."
Right.
I'm trying to make it, where I can understand this. Middletown graduate, I can read. So, okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Any other comments or questions from council at this time? All right, hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gink, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankah?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the last item, please.
Item number three, resolution number R-2025-22. A resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2025. General fund, first reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The staff report requests supplemental appropriations for the FOP contracts that were approved earlier this year and a grant received by the community and economic development department. The council approved the FOP contracts on March 18th, 2025. As noted in previous reports, additional funding was anticipated. This includes retroactive back pay to November 1st, 2024, and the funds and salaries and benefits not included in the 2025 budget due to pending contracts. The total is $735,578.18, and the unencumbered fund balance will decrease by this amount. The community and economic development department received two grants, the Pat Landy Grant and the America 250 Ohio Grant. Both were deposited into other miscellaneous revenue for a total of $10,000, with the anticipated appropriations of $5,000 each for the community grocery clinic and the AM 250 historic project. The unencumbered fund balance will be reduced by that $10,000 to be used towards the noted projects for the economic investment in underserved communities for access and educational purposes.
Thank you. As this is a first reading, there is no action to be taken at this time, however. Is there any discussion from council at this time?
Yeah, I have one comment. I, I don't know if I've ever seen this before, but I guess I have an issue with two totally unrelated object or subjects under one piece of legislation. If a council member had an issue with one of these, it, to me, it kind of shoots down the whole piece of legislation. I don't know that I've ever seen two unrelated objects under one piece of legislation. And I guess I have an issue with that. I don't have a problem with this, that it works out, okay, I get these two, but I don't know. Have we ever done that before? I don't recall.
It sounds like from Samantha, that was something that law decided.
Yeah, I, I think it's a bad practice. I don't know if anybody else thinks.
For maybe, did you want to, like, do you want to have a conversation of separating this one or just in future?
No, in the future. I don't have a problem with this, but, I mean, do you see my point?
Yes.
If somebody had an issue with the first one, but the second one's okay, then we have to go through the process of splitting them out.
It seems like exactly would save time.
Yeah, instead of, I, I guess the reasoning was to cut down on the number of pieces of legislation, but...
Most likely.
I don't know that I've ever seen this before. You got two totally different subjects under one piece of legislation.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions at this time? All right, hearing none, this concludes the legislation for the evening. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Do any council members have anything they would like to bring up under unfinished business? Hearing none, we will proceed. The next item is new business. Do any council members have any new business this evening?
I would, I would just like us to consider what I mentioned before, the October 4th, Saturday, for the RFQ due date of everything we're going to discuss for the Manchester and all the other buildings.
All right, is there any discussion at this time?
Yeah, a, a good reminder on that, Paul. So I was thinking earlier, you know, the standard RFQ is 30 days, so I don't know, Ashley, if you feel, so let's say October 4th is the decision date, right, or the town hall, whatever it is. Would you think August, like, say, beginning of August to release a 30-day RFQ would be feasible? Because then it...
I would, I would say no later than that.
Okay.
I think that we can have a couple more meetings and get that wrapped up for an August 1st release.
Okay. I just want to make sure staff had enough time before the October 4th meeting, if, if it's October 4th, that they have, you know, however many weeks to review it and, okay.
Any other comments or questions at this time about that? I, again, I'll just reiterate what I said earlier was, which is, I prefer that this go back to staff and the community downtown committee, just to see if this is a date that works for everybody before we decide on the date. That's, so we don't have to have this conversation again.
Yeah, and we could have that the next downtown refresh committee. Yeah, we could do that.
But Mayor, what the purpose of that is, is that gives them a full quarter, because that, and then there should be no more discovery, no more nothing, and then we can make the final decision, and that still gives you the last quarter to execute said decision. And with Ashley, you know, when you release the RFQ, you know, at the beginning of August, you have a holiday at the beginning of September, so about the second week of September, you'll be able to review everything. That gives you two or three weeks to review, and then by that time, all the decisions can be made. So that's, that's the only reason I brought that up, is normally it's 30 days for anyone to respond to those things, in fairness.
Yeah, and after that 30 days, we'd certainly give council an update on who's applied and how that's looking.
Yep.
So at this time, I would prefer to hold off on that specific date until the committee and staff can discuss that date, but I would also be amenable to looking at a date as well, if that one is not, because I know there are other factors as well. That's why I want staff to also look at it, as far as what the BCFA is doing and all of those other things, before we just decide on a specific date, and so it doesn't come back to us again. Any other comments or questions? Any other new business from council members?
The only other thing I, I had was just potential funding streams for the police. That would be...
For the range?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business from council members? Okay, thank you. Then, hearing none, that does conclude our new business. The next item on the agenda is executive session. I'll have to read this. Here we go. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session under the authority of ORC 121.22G1 to consider the appointment of a public official, and under the authority of ORC 121.22G3, kind of conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. To move to executive session, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gink, please call the roll.
Mayor Slankah?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Yeses have it.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slanka.
Yes. The yeses have it and the motion passes. Council will now return to open session. The planning commission holds an open seat. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Tara Ramsey-Hunter to the city planning commission?
Motion.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slanka.
Yes. The yeses have it and the motion passes. Council will now return to open session. The planning commission holds an open seat. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Tara Ramsey-Hunter to the city planning commission?
Motion.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slanka.
Yes. The yeses have it and the motion passes. Council will now return to open session. The planning commission holds an open seat. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Tara Ramsey-Hunter to the city planning commission?
Motion.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there a second? It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slanka.
Yes. The yeses have it and the motion passes. Council will now return to open session. The planning commission holds an open seat. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Tara Ramsey-Hunter to the city planning commission?
Motion.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slanka.
Yes. The yeses have it and the motion passes. Council will now return to open session. The planning commission holds an open seat. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Tara Ramsey-Hunter to the city planning commission?
Motion.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slanka.
Yes.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slanka.
Yes. The yeses have it and the motion passes. Council will now return to open session. The planning commission holds an open seat. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Tara Ramsey-Hunter to the city planning commission?
Motion.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Gank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
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 Yes.
The yeses have it and the motion passes. This concludes our regular city council meeting for Middletown, Ohio, July 1st, 2025 at 10:17 PM. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, July 15th, 2025 at 5:30 PM in these chambers for our next regular city council meeting. Thank you and good night.